The school board meeting of April 21st, 2020 is now called to order. The time is 1:00 PM. Following the recommendation of Governor DeSantis and the Florida Department of Education, this meeting will be held virtually, streamed live, and will be posted to our YouTube channel upon completion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one item under staff presentations to the board, which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason that we're bringing this item forward, we felt that it was very important to provide our board and our public an update in terms of where we are relative to the schedule, since there's been a lot of questions and concerns that have been generated. So we plan to do that at this board action meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. As presiding officer, I find that there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Also on the agenda this afternoon, our public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, two items under academic services, three items under business services, one item under human resources, one item under information systems, one item under operations, as well as one item under attorney recommendations. Also, we have four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? So, and seconded by Mrs. Morgan, please record your vote. Susan, do we have all the votes?
I'm waiting on Mrs. Gittens and Mrs. Jevon Millie.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, do you want me to vote affirmatively for you?
Yes, Susan, affirmative please. I can't get it to come up. I've joined the meeting, but it's not up yet. Thank you.
Good pass of 7-0.
Thank you. Okay. This afternoon, Mrs. Gittens will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Gittens, please deliver the invocation at this time.
Thank you. Lord, we come to you today grateful for hope and strength, thankful that we are able to continue to do our work. Lord, that you help us to be honest, to be truthful, to be fair, to listen without judgment, and to decide with the right methods. We thank you, Lord, for all that are working to help us be safe during this difficult time for so many. We ask that you just watch over us as a nation, as a people, and that you will help those that are going through very, very difficult times. We thank you for the opportunity just to say thank you, and we ask that you be with us throughout this meeting. And we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Morgan, at this time, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. This afternoon, we have no recog- no recognitions. We do have a staff presentation to the board regarding the high school's schedule and discussion. At this time, Dr. Atkins, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So, good afternoon, board members. As we have discussed many times, I think your primary expectation of me as a superintendent and our staff is to make sure that we're doing everything that we can in our power to ensure that our students are receiving the best education that they can possibly get, so they can reach his or her highest potential and compete really in our global economy. It's also our job to listen. And based on the research that has been shared, and I appreciate all of you taking the time to go through the documents that have been provided, I and my administrative team still firmly believe that adding time to the high school day and moving from a block schedule to seven periods will greatly benefit all students. I also believe that over the course of the next few months, many of the concerns that have been brought forth regarding the change will be worked out to the satisfaction of many of our parents and students. However, I also understand that the challenge of the time that we're in and taking the time to read and to listen to the communication that has been coming into the district about making this change now. So that proves that this has become a significant challenge because of those reasons stated above. So as a result, I am suggesting that we delay these changes and to keep status quo in terms of our schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. Now, during that time, we can better share the reasons that we are advocating for the change with our families, as well as work through the concerns that have been expressed. The recommendation is to implement a seven-hour, seven-period day at the high school for the 21-22 school year, as well as launch a five-by-five program at the two schools that we had previously identified. Now, it was never our intention to cause additional stress or disenfranchise our shareholders. We simply made a decision that we felt was in the best academic interest of all students. But listening to the feedback from our community, it's clear that we need to spend more time explaining the why. We are committing to doing that and delaying this change for now, but I will discuss a timeline in a moment for getting further input and also educating our public as it relates to our recommendations. Now, I do want to be clear that while we feel there is a need for more time for our students, so we can increase student learning, that despite that fact, our district has still made substantial progress. I mean, you saw from the document the progress that we've been making at the middle school and the elementary level, but we've also continued to make high school-level achievement advances. For example, most of our high schools saw gains in ELA proficiency, and majority also saw ELA gains in learning gains in ELL, ELA. The overwhelming majority of our high schools saw significant and substantial gains in math proficiency, with the majority of them seeing double-digit increases in math learning gains. And again, most of our high schools also saw an increase in math learning gains among the lowest 25%. So, high schools also saw gains in social studies, and 100% of our high schools saw an increase in their total points earned on the Florida Department of Education school grades. And 100% of our high schools have seen an increase in our graduation rates, which we have reported to you many times. You know, our traditional high schools have a graduation rate that went, has gone up 4% to 92.3% right now. So that's, again, over a 4% increase. And it is, again, the highest graduation rates that we have seen. So despite the challenges that we have talked about with our unique population and our time that we would like to see increased, our high schools have still been very successful. Now, after speaking to most of you yesterday, I was able to make contact with the majority, almost everyone, except for one board member. I do believe that all board members, and even that one board member, you know, she shared, Mrs. Vaughn, shared email over the weekend. So I do feel that I have her thoughts on the matter. I absolutely have no doubt in my mind that you all understand the reasoning behind this recommendation. So, as a result of that, I don't feel there's a need for an extended presentation. I think people have taken the time to review the document, ask questions, and so forth. But I also believe that there will be some questions that we need to address relative to the recommended delay, that we can really take the time to address at this time. So, for example, concerns about teacher and staff reappointments, the impact of the budget, which is, these are typical decisions that are made during this period of time. But in light of the COVID-19 situation, I think that's further escalated these concerns. So I would like to take the time to address some of these concerns raised by the board. We've seen some reports in the media, and there's some of the accuracies that we would want to correct, and then concerns raised by the community. Now that, you know, unless there's any questions to my initial statement, I will go ahead and start to address those concerns. So, Madam Chair, before I go on, you know, relative to just the decision to make a delay at this point, I wanted to see if the board wants to ask any additional questions. I will get into like things like timeline and budget and reappointments and all that next.
Good enough. Thank you. Board members, anyone have any questions? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Atkins, for listening and for realizing that, all things considered, and you and I have in the past shared several different lists, all things considered, this is an excellent decision. It was rolling out awfully fast with COVID-19, and I think that when our kids finally go back to school in August, there's going to be enough of an adjustment for the kids and for the teachers and for everybody that, you know, when we roll something out like this, something big like this, we want to make sure that we have optimal conditions. We don't want to set ourselves up for bumps in the road, so to speak, before we even start rolling down the road. So I'm glad you made that decision, and I'm looking forward to having all of us on the board have some input, just with ideas. And I'm going to throw out one more thing that I have, that's been kind of a mantra for a long time. Let's try to see if we can't get our high school kids in the future going to school before 7:00 AM, because all of you know the research. And if, you know, looking at academic achievement, let's just, you know, maybe it'll be easier. It should be easier next year as we accelerate the proximity school plan. And as we do that, we should have, by the end of the year, a better bus schedule. And so maybe in another year, we can get those kids so that I know from experience, and I think a couple of the others of you do, so we're not literally prying heads off the desks at 7:00 AM. So again, thank you for making what I consider to be a really good decision.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, Mrs. Gittens. Mrs. Gittens, please unmute yourself.
That button moves every time I get ready to talk. But anyway, thank you. I echo the sentiments that it's a very good idea, Superintendent, to postpone this at this time. And I will share in one conversation I had with the superintendent, one of the things I said is that I look at this big picture, that we've got scheduling times, we've got start times, we've got attendance, we've got transportation, we've got all of those things. And my suggestion is, is if we were doing a 500-piece puzzle, put all the puzzle pieces on the table at once and start to sort them out as to what goes where, because they are intertwined. And if we change one thing, it's going to affect the others. So this will give us an opportunity and time as a community, as all of the stakeholders, to look at each puzzle piece and decide which way it goes best. I also asked him and suggested that we have a consultant, the proximity consultant, working with us now. And they, I'm sure, have experience in these types of things. So since we already have them on board, why not have them included in some of these conversations? And maybe they can shed some light on, you know, easier ways. Because as we look at proximity, it's going to affect start times, and it's going to affect all of this. So rather than doing one thing and have to move every piece on the puzzle and put another piece in, my suggestion is that we look at everything at once. And once we make that decision, it's the best and the most valid decision. One question I do have is about, can you explain, Dr. Atkins, about two high schools, East and Dunbar, we're going to do the five-by-five, which is one of the options. And I was told that those were going to be pilots. And in my mind, a pilot means you try something to see if it'll work for everybody. So can you tell us, I understand there's some conflicts in being able to do a pilot for those two schools while the others are still staying where they're at? Can you explain that to the group and to the rest of stakeholders, please? Thank you.
I will do that. One of the things that we have to always look at that was been, that has been raised is the transportation concerns that go with any type of a schedule change. So if you're moving these two schools to an increase of 51 minutes, you're talking about, you know, seven hours and 21 minutes in the school day. That's going to impact, you know, the when those schools are going to be picked up to, for the afternoon travel home, which impacts the pickup for the middle school level. So both of these schools actually service the east zone. So in order to do that, it was going to be very, very difficult to do that and impossible to do that without changing start times in some of our other elementary schools and some of our special centers. So we thought that, you know, one of the concerns that was raised is, you know, we didn't get an opportunity to really re-change our decision. We made our decisions about what school we were attending based on what we thought the start time was. So now you're asking for a change in that. So we really didn't want to put elementary schools in that situation this year by piloting those two particular schools while, you know, while maintaining the rest of the schools as they are. The other piece was if we extend the day of our other high schools and also look at the changes in the start times in some of our middles, et cetera, which we were doing, that worked a lot better with how we set the pilot than if we just leave everything else alone and simply just change those two schools. So, you know, the last thing we want to happen is to implement a major pilot like this, which is very important, and then start to have difficulties with transportation in terms of the other schools that those, you know, those buses service. And, you know, if Dr. Savage, I know he's listening, and if there's anything else that he would like to add, you know, he can come up to the podium, but otherwise, that's the explanation that I would provide.
Okay, thank you. And then also on that, your proposal, you know, in your statement, you basically said that the staff's thought is to still go with the seven-by-seven, even though we have the four-by-four, the five-by-five, and the seven. Is there opportunity for movement in that? And the reason I ask is that if at this point we are going out to all of the stakeholders to get their input, if they really understand each one, and we give input based on what we think is best, I guess, can there be movement? And my main thing is, I have said all along that the five-by-five is what I feel is, in my opinion, one of seven, is one of the best because, along with site-based decision-making, it gives the school, the administrators, the teachers, all of the employees, every one at that school, an ability to help make that decision for their demographic. When I worked as a teacher in Lee County School District, I was working as a teacher when we went from seven periods to the four-by-four. And there were, you know, discussions that would be better for our students because they have more time. And I understand that things change. But I really, one of the things I really relished was the fact that we at that school got an opportunity with our parents and our teachers and our staff and everybody to make that site-based decision.
So to answer your question, it is yes. There is room, obviously, to make some changes relative to the input. So I think what I'll do is, I'll just go ahead and go to the timeline first, relative to this, in terms of getting input. And then we can go into the rest of it in terms of what this is going to look like for this year and the impact on our staffing and budget. So now, I know Ms. Gittens suggested, she wanted me to come to this, and it was a good suggestion to come to this workshop, come to this meeting with a workshop suggestion, if that's the direction we were going to go in. And I'm sorry, I don't have a specific date, like you told me. But I would suggest that July or August, we talk to the board about, you know, our initial findings relative to third-quarter data and provide a little bit more information relative to what our options are to the board, whether it's research, and then have that conversation in August, so that we have a general direction. And then go into September, August and September, our school principals can start to talk to staff, our SACS, you know, our school advisory committees, and get feedback on these different models. So then, we can gather that feedback from our SACS. Also, we would do this at the district level with our district advisory committee, our student advisory committee, which, again, these are things that a number of board members have made suggestions. And then, of course, we always are going to bring in our talc and spout partners as well. So this would allow for the opportunity of getting input from really a wide audience of stakeholders. And then, what we would do is, we would come back to the board in early October, I think, with really a stronger recommendation based on all the feedback that we have seen, give the board, again, an opportunity to consider the different options. Because, again, I definitely know this is going to impact bell schedules and also student assignment that's going to be coming up, and parents are going to be making decisions in, actually, December. You know, a lot of those open houses occur in December. So we want to make sure we have that decision-making timeline prior to that date. So the recommendation would be to come back to the board in October, and then the latest possible decision point would be in November. That way, the people go into the student assignment knowing what the start time, the end time of their school's going to be, what the schedule's going to be, all of those things in advance prior to making those decisions for the following year.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Ms. Jevon Elley, and then Ms. Jordan.
I was actually going to say Debbie had her hand up first, but...
I apologize, Ms. Jordan.
So Debbie, do you want to go? Or did we lose her? I don't know. Anyways, okay. So, thank you, Dr. Atkins, for hearing what the community is really just asking for you just to really weigh in and allow them the opportunity to do so. So I really appreciate you postponing this. It's important, especially, I think the timing was really just bad timing. Unfortunately, we couldn't control COVID-19. I'd love to see that go away sooner than later. So as much of any of us would as well. My couple of questions, and I would like to see what the board thought was. I'd like to talk about the start time, because I think in your, more of your data and research, I love that piece, I don't feel has been really put into your plan. And I think somehow, if you could, your staff could research more, and I would like to get the consensus of the board on that, because I think that it's really important. If we're going to make changes, and it's regarding student achievement, that is a piece that we're not, we were not putting in play. is a piece that we're not, we were not putting in, in place. Um, so I would like to see that. Um, and it doesn't mean that we're gonna, that's the way you're gonna go, but I would like to see the, the, the research. Um, in the data in, uh, part of your, uh, briefing. Uh, the other thing that I was concerned about, I've had people ask me about is the, um, academies and their electives. I think if with, uh, uh, the five by five or the long, uh, longer day, they get the electives, I, I, I can't. People are, are really upset that they're going to have to take online classes right now when they're doing this online and they're like, we don't like this online. You know, so I think that, that we should have options that they could still have a class. So, um, I'm really curious to see how an extended day might, a li- a little bit longer time added to the schedule versus, um, the, the only six hours and fifty, fifty-five minute schedule. So I really like to see more information and it'd be blended and, and I, I think give opportunity that each school could do something different because I think IB, IB schools are different from the other, the arts school. So I, we really don't want to eliminate any arts classes because, you know, the art school, they take more than one elective. They, yeah, they're taking several and we're losing that. I think with the seven period schedule, if I'm not, uh, right, they're, they're limited. Um, so I would just like to see more of that and, and that was a concern of many parents. And so I think that we, we are a, a choice community, a choice school district, and I think that schools can start at a different time and be, it could be different for others, high schools and give opportunity and choice for parents and students to pick. Uh, so I think that's really important and I don't necessarily think that everybody has to be the same because, um, education is really not one size fits all. So with this, also with this, uh, wi- uh, with us waiting, I think it's, that's great because we had already closed the door for students and not going into ninth grade that they had picked one school and now they're, if, if they went with this present news, the new proposed, uh, schedule changes, that they might have picked a, a completely different school. So I think that, um, we, we, we need to make sure that we get our information out before school choice, our enrollment is done next, this next year. So I think that's really the questions I really had was, uh, if we waiting to make sure the, our academies stay strong and, um, and, uh, electors are, that still have that opportunity for electives and I think the start time, I think that was, oh, I was wondering, is there any way that we could do a survey maybe prior to see, that would include a lot of everyone because not everybody's going to be able to attend and have their input. But if we had a survey out there, what, and once we get more information out there on what the plan is and see what op- options people would be more like, more likely to pick. So I, I, that was, if there was a survey, I think that, that, and then if people don't choose to do the survey, then, then that's on them. So I think getting that out there and allowing them the options to look at what we're trying to propose and understanding it is really what we missed. That's the step, a small step that we missed. And I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jevanelli. Dr. Atkins, do you want to go ahead and, uh, respond to that or shall I call on Ms. Jordan?
Well, oh yeah, I'll go ahead and respond to, uh, to, uh, those questions. And I think a little bit later, we can probably hit a couple of the other ones. Uh, I would say first of all, the transportation issue is something that the board has raised, uh, on several occasions. The staff is working on that and, and I really believe the recommendation is for us to come back to the board and really have a really good discussion around our transportation options. That, that research is there, it's valid, you know, there's no getting around that. Um, but there's, um, you know, there's major implications to that decision. And I, I just want the board to be aware of what those are. Uh, doesn't mean it can't be done. It's not off the table at, at all. It just means that you're substantially are going to impact the start time for other schools as well. But it's a conversation, it's a big conversation um, that we, we just need to have as a governance team, I believe. And so we'll definitely do that. Um, I do think the point about the electives and the career academies is an important one. That's an education piece. I think that we have to have our uh, our principals and also our, our parents and students comfortable about as we would move to any type of schedule. And so this will give us the opportunity, I think, to address both those issues. Um, the, I did pass on, uh, also the concerns relative to distance learning. I think we're getting better during this period of time, but also have always felt that distance learning and online, uh, virtual education is something that works really well for a group of students. It may not work well for all of our students. So I think we have to take that in consideration, um, with anything that we have moving forward. So, you know, all those things we will certainly uh, look at, uh, as we, uh, go through getting input from our shareholders.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jordan, then Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. Uh, first I would just like to thank Dr. Atkins and his team for doing, you know, all that work. I really appreciate the time that they put in for that. My daughter was, two of my daughters were in the seventh period classes and they were able to have, uh, chorus and participate in everything that they wanted to participate. But in saying that, I have other ones that probably couldn't have dealt with that either. But I appreciate the fact that, you know, listening to the, the students because they came out to really voice their have their voices heard, which I, you know, think that we have to make sure that we are listening to these kids. But again, we are, you know, working on the proximity, um, schools, we're working on, you know, the change of school schedule, the later start times, which I think is a great idea as well. So I think it does behoove us to try to, you know, take the time and, um, get all of those put together. So we have one thing to roll out at the same time. And making sure that, you know, student assignment is aware of the changes. So when the parents do go in, they do have that option of where they, uh, put their child at. But in saying that, I, I just definitely, uh, appreciate it. And I know when we were out there doing the community forums, the turnout, um, that we had was very minimal. And I think that this will now create um, a need to start coming out and start having that conversation with the stakeholders and the community. They will start participating, but I do really thank you, um, and your team for everything that you've done. And I think this is a very good, um, move for, uh, going into the next year.
Thank you, um, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Patrica.
Uh, I have two questions for you. What are the budgetary implications? How will this impact teachers? Uh, it's the first question. The second question is how will we, um, gather feedback from the community while making sure that our most vulnerable students are represented? I believe that in the public feedback we have received up to this point, we've not heard from those students. And I have significant concern that those students are not being represented in this decision. Um, so the traditional means that we use in terms of surveys and SAC meetings and public forums, um, we're not hearing from those kids. And I think that it is, um, not only incumbent upon the principals, but I believe that our principals do an excellent job of, of advocating for the, for those children. So how will, how will we take a more, um, empirical approach to, um, categorizing feedback and making sure that we truly are representing the entire community instead of um, those members of the community who have the means and the wherewithal to come in front of us and represent themselves?
Okay. So the, the first, uh, issue had to do with, I think, uh, you know, employment and, and the budget and so forth. So I'll, I'll address that first and then we'll have, um, you know, staff also weigh into this as well. Um, I, I do have to say right off the bat that, that had we just continued uh, as we are right now in terms of the staffing, um, in terms of the schedules and we hadn't even raised this issue, that, uh, as we go down the river, we're still going to encounter some rough waters because of COVID-19. So that is so certainly escalated this concern. It certainly, uh, exacerbated this situation. So I just, you know, that's something that was going, that has happened regardless of, of this, uh, uh, decision. So the issue of employment, this is the time of year that if you look at our collective bargaining agreements uh, that require us to do evaluations and complete reappointments during the April, May timeline, uh, where reappointments do come up. And then you put on top of this discussions about the schedule and COVID-19. So that has certainly raised every, everyone's anxiety. Um, now recognizing this impact, you know, we have always worked with our employees moving, you know, and during this period of time. However, this year, um, our HR team recognized that this was unprecedented and we're going to have to do more than we've ever done in the past to help them. So Human Resources is now taking a more aggressive approach in terms of placing people. So in the past, they would work with the employee, uh, share with them available vacancies, work with that employee to make a good match. And then, uh, you know, Dr. Pruitt shared with me that after we were at the end of, uh, really this past year, that, that she could only recall one, one person, and there may be others that, that ended up being displaced as a result of all those changes that we made in terms of changing the ratios. Um, so having said that, remember that we always have, uh, on average, two hundred additional hires than we do over and above what we lose in terms of, of, um, these changes and retirement and attrition and moving out of the, the area. So we always have more positions than we typically did the previous year. Um, so recognizing that, recognizing the fact that we do have an opening, uh, openings at a new high school, Gateway High School. We have another grade level that's going to be opening at Vanita Springs High School. Um, and recognizing we're going to have attrition at the end of the year. Uh, we are very confident that all of our, uh, teachers that have effective and, and highly effective evaluations are going to have a place in this school district. Um, so having said that, I'm going to ask Dr. Pruitt to, uh, basically give you a little bit more detail relative to what Human Resources is going to do to help our employees during this difficult time.
Good afternoon, everyone. I forgot about the unmute button. The, we're going to have really two processes that are going to go on. One that happens every year and that is our normal surplus process and that applies to any instructional staff member or, um, employee of the, uh, Spalk bargaining unit that, um, has been with us and is on the grandfathered schedule and then we will go through that process as normal. What we are adding this year for those folks that are on an annual contract and that they may be displaced due to, um, you know, the current, uh, budgetary situation. We are going to literally handhold those folks and help, um, put them in positions throughout the district. And that's going to be a little different that we've done in the past when we've assisted folks in this position where they've had to go out and apply and, um, you know, hope that they get an interview at a particular location. Really, we'll be taking more of a, um, centralized hiring process, if you will, relative to any of the folks that are in this particular position. I do want to, um, stress the, the part that Dr. Atkins shared that this applies to employees who have an effective or highly effective evaluation. Um, because we do every year have a group of folks that are, you know, not meeting the level of expectation relative to um, you know, the, the work that they need to be performing. And so we're not talking about those individuals. We have a, um, been working with talc and spout throughout, throughout this, uh, pandemic time period and have had the opportunity to discuss this issue and they're very, very, um, satisfied and are um, actually really appreciating the steps that Human Resources is going to take. And that function is going to be managed by the recruitment department. Um, whereas the traditional surplus process is handled by staffing and talent management. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Gittens?
Hi, Dr. Pruitt. Um, I actually have a couple of questions. Um, first, first of all, I know that, um, there already have been teachers on the high school level that have, um, gotten notification from their principal that, um, they were going to be reallocated or surplus or what, what word are we using? The?
Well, um, it, so surplus would be anybody that's on the grandfathered schedule. I would say, um, yeah, uh, reallocated for any of those additional folks. And to, and to your point, we have not, we were waiting till after this board meeting before we reach out to the principals to say, who are those folks? As soon as we do that, which our plan is to do, um, starting tomorrow, we'll reach out to those, uh, high school, middle school principals. I don't, I don't know if there's any middle school, but we'll reach out to those folks and say who are on your list and then we'll start making those comments. But we have not.
Yeah. So the question, the question is, um, really twofold. Um, it's been my experience with scheduling that, um, all of the, um, student requests for the next year need to be in. So for instance, a principal, um, if a principal wanted to run an advanced physics class, for, for example, but if you only had maybe seven kids sign up typically, and I know that the principals do have discretion on this, but typically the class won't, won't take. And, and, you know, likewise, if there is, you know, everybody wants to take a certain elective, it may be that they have to open more sections than they thought or add another half teacher or something like that. So my first question is then, I don't even know what school it, or schools it was, but were they kind of maybe jumping the gun on saying, you know, um, we're going to let you go from this school for next year? And the other part of that question is, um, when it, when it comes down to, um, you give the go-ahead signal. Let's say there are too many, um, science teachers or two, whatever subject. Um, how is that going to be decided? Is that decided on seniority? Or is it, um, a little bit more subjective? And even though all of, um, principals' teachers are rated effective, highly effective in let's say the science department, that principal says, no, no, I think I'll get rid of, you know.
Right. So I want to, I want to, yeah, I want to do two parts there. On the first, you know, um, it, it, there are things that principals and I, and I know this from my own experience that you're going to know um, even before everything has flushed out and you've had that final master schedule. You're going to know either based on programs that you're offering, you can look at, let's say, do I, you know, do I offer Spanish three? I can look at my Spanish two and see, you know, I can make some assumptions based on that. So there are some cases where I am definitely going to know um, that, that I, you know, I have a need here or I no longer have this need here. Um, so, so I, it doesn't surprise me that there's been some employees that have had those conversations. I think what I also want to say to that though is we will be monitoring so that if, if a, if a school says, okay, I no longer need this seventh science teacher. If come July, we see that you're going to be, oh, look, all of a sudden you need that seventh science teacher, then you're going to have the opportunity, that employee will come back to that school. So in an effort to keep any of that, you know, to keep, keep it all on, you know, level playing field and so everybody knows what's going on. So I, I, I will, I will tell you that, um, relative to that. In terms of how the decisions are made, it is, you know, it's, there is, it's outlined in the, um, collective bargaining agreement and it's, I can't give you a generalities because there are several things that go into that decision. Yes, seniority is a key piece, but certification is another piece to that. Uh, you know, other rules that the individual may have at the school, there is opportunities that waivers can be, uh, placed for certain individuals that have key positions. Any of those waivers, you know, talc is involved in that process when we, when we have those requests that come forward. So it's, it's never done in isolation, um, in terms of the district. Talc and Spalk are always involved in those, um, conversations and have to, you know, provide approval for any of those situations. So it really just depend, there's a lot of factors that go involved. The one thing that you can always pretty much say, all things being equal, then your grandfather teachers always, they are first, first choice, first everything. And then from there, your, um, your annual teachers. But again, that's if all things are equal.
Right, right. And I, I do understand and this was something.
Right, right. And I do understand, and this was something I experienced in other districts, like same in Texas, that the coach, if you're the only person that's volunteering to be the girls' basketball coach, something like that, and you teach history and have only been at the school a year or two, you're going to have a one-up on a history teacher who's been there five years, for instance. So, it's those kinds of things, like a testing coordinator and.
Right. And they have to fill out, they can't just do it. There is a.
Okay.
But, yeah, and again, the union is involved in that.
Okay, great. Thanks. That answers it.
Thank you then, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, a couple of questions, but they're quick. One is, Dr. Pruitt, you mentioned the staff, like the teachers and all that had already been told about being in meets or whatever. What about the example of someone that may have been, had a discussion with their administrator and had the opportunity in that fourth quarter to up their game, so to speak? And because of the COVID-19, they don't have that opportunity to show that they took it all in and they did make a change. So, that puts them at a disadvantage at this time of selection. Can you address that? And then I have another.
Sure. We've had those conversations with Talc and Spalk in our MOU talk specifically about evidence that would have been obtained from the start of the school year until, you know, mid-March when all of this started. And the agreement would be that that would be, that it would have to be data. In other words, there'd have to be the walkthroughs, there'd have to have been maybe some formative observations, conferences, things like that, that would have to be in place for that. And in the MOU, what it states is, is that anybody that's going to be renewed is going to have that effective or highly effective evaluation.
The only thing that I feel is, you know, that concerns me about it is, what if that person was not, you know, highly effective in this situation up until March? And then actually, in this type of situation that we're in now, they have thrived. Their students are thriving and things are moving along. Do they not get credit for this last quarter? Because if you do it up until March, and I understand that, but then, like saying, you're going to evaluate me this year for my livelihood based on two-thirds or, you know, three-quarters of what I have done and not the last year.
Right. I guess a couple of things I would say to that. One is that the time period from the start of the school year till mid-March is really an evaluation of the work environment that we hope we're going to have for next school year. So, our evaluation will be based on that. And we'd be thrilled if they're thriving in that online environment and certainly would want to encourage that. But I don't believe it would be completely reflective of offsetting what occurred from the beginning of the school year till March 13th. However, with that being said, I will tell you that we do have an appeal process and we do every year. And anyone who is non-renewed has the opportunity to present their case and have that conversation. And that Talc and Spalk are also involved in those meetings and those reviews. So, I would say that there still would be that avenue if we had that, you know, particular situation occur.
Okay, thank you. The next question has to do with budget. And this is Dr. Atkins or whomever. It's my understanding when the administrators receive their budget, I think it was last week, that it was reflective of a seven-period schedule. And since that does affect, you know, spending and budget, whether you're going to, you know, schedule for seven or schedule for something else, how are we going to handle that change since we're not doing it? They've already gotten their budgets. What is your process in helping them to work through that? Or will we revisit the budget?
I mean, I'll defer to Dr. D., but my belief is that, you know, we don't, our future is uncertain relative to funding. And so, really to go back in and make changes now and then find out that this is our amount of money and then go back and change it again. You know, there's still so much uncertainty through this time that I think we're kind of in that holding pattern to see what is going to happen. I don't know. Did you?
Oh, yeah. I mean, before Dr. Decimours gets up there, one of the things that, you know, our school principals have been and continuing to work on is what is this schedule going to look like moving forward? So, I think this is going to be helpful to them. But because COVID-19, we do know that we can't just turn back the clock and have the same staffing level. So, what typically happens at this time of year that you're going to start to see is that our budget department, along with Human Resources and school development, our school development executive directors start to work individually with our school principals and staff to try to make those staffing decisions relative to the budget. So, you are going to see, you know, things that we'll have to do such as, you know, we have to look at what are the, what is the class size going to look like moving forward? Or what are those ratios going to look like moving forward? Fortunately, I believe, and Dr. Decimours can probably respond to this, but I believe at the high school level, we have some of our lower class sizes relative to our other, like the middle school level. But having said that, you know, that is something that regardless of which direction we had gone here, you know, COVID-19 certainly has an impact. We will, we do know that our legislators are going to come into special session at some point and we should get feedback from them. But we have, as a result, been very, very conservative with our budget. I think some of you may have heard about an email that she had sent out that was basically telling our school leaders and department leaders to be conservative with the rest of this year's budget so that we can conserve everything that we could and apply it to next year's budget. So, that's how we'll move forward. But at this time, if Dr. Decimours has more to add, I've got her, you know, ready to. So, there she is.
Hey, hello, hello, everyone. Yeah, that is right. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And yes, it is true that with the allocation to the high schools, it was based upon that seven-period day. So, at this point, the high schools have received their school allocations and are expected to work within that. We need more information about how our budget situation across the state will resolve before we make another change, as Dr. Atkins just mentioned. So, we are analyzing potential options and we'll be working now that we've had this conversation here and know what our marching orders are going forward. We will analyze potential options and work very closely with all of our high school principals to do so. That include adjustments to potentially increased class size, possible changes to planning time amongst other things. So, we'll be working very closely with the high school principals to make sure that we are able to resolve or get an understanding on collectively how we'll work moving forward related to the budgets that they have received at this point.
Okay, thank you. My last comment is, actually going back to agree with what Ms. Patrica said about, you know, reaching all of our stakeholders. I think the bigger picture for us at this point is that the COVID-19 has shown us our, or surfaced our inadequacies in communicating with all of our stakeholders at all levels. And I would really like to see some of the data that we have as far as reaching all of our students and families and everything, which may be easier to, you know, to gather now that we're in this situation. But it is, and thank you, Ms. Patrica, for bringing that up because it really is an issue. We see that, you know, HGR or emails or texts or whatever are not reaching everyone. And we've got to kind of look at that and maybe in a workshop, we can discuss it. But thank you.
One of the things that, just to get back to Ms. Patrica's other question and what Ms. Gittens just raised, you know, one of the things that we will do is we'll work with our Director of Accountability and Research, Director Quavis, and he and Dr. Spiro. And I think the important thing here is we have to design a mechanism to be able to get to some of our, some of the members of the community whose voices do not normally be heard or heard. That's important, obviously. You know, one of the things we told everyone as related to the schedule and the research that's out there is making sure that you have a good research design. And so, I think if you're looking at gathering input, you also need to make sure that you're gathering input with a good design in mind. And I think accountability and research, that department can certainly help us in that regard. So, I'll be doing that and we'll bring really what a solution may look like to you all so you know how we're going to be gathering that input. That was a good point raised.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Okay, board members, it is 1:57. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Giovinelli? Unmute, please. Thank you.
I am. Hi, I just, I actually did have a couple. What actually is the savings in transportation and the food service budget right now since we're not feeding the students and busing them around? There has to be some sort of savings that we could, we're going to be able to transfer those monies into next year's budget. I'm hoping, I'm hopeful for, so I was just curious if we know those numbers as of yet because obviously, we're not feeding the students that we normally do. And then, one of the other things that I had is back to the schedule. So, I've got two things here. And is the middle schools are on block. And if block really isn't beneficial, because I thought it would, block was designed to prepare students for college and because that's kind of that schedule, that similar schedule. So, are we looking, and this is back, you don't have to answer this today, but are we looking at middle schools, looking at their schedules? I know you're saying that the achievement issue is not there, it's only in high school. But that is a stepping stone to getting to high school. So, I don't know if block is really not the answer, should we move away from it? So, what's the data on that? So, that, and that's all I have. But I just, I just thought about, you know, we're talking money and I'm just curious. There has to be some sort of savings. Trying to look at the bright side of COVID-19. And there had to be some savings with not busing our students and not feeding our students and as we normally do and, you know, typically. So, that's a couple of questions and I'll leave it there.
All right, I'll respond to the first part and I'll let Dr. Decimours respond to the second part. Or maybe I got those reversed. But anyway, let me, let me talk about the middle school and the, and the schedule that occurs at the middle school. So, a lot of our middle schools are on like a five-by-five and they were contemplating going to a six-by-six. The difference between a high school and a middle school doing that is that middle schools use them a little bit differently than most of our high schools. I'd say the closest I would compare it is how Dunbar High School in Eastley County used their block schedule to service their ELL students. Very similar to what our middle school students do with our, with our middle schoolers is they actually use the five-by-five to take the academic classes and have those academics go every single day. So, that's how they're getting more time into their schedule is that they're having that mathematics class, even though it's a five-by-five schedule, that math class or that ELA class meets every single day. And in many cases, the science class meets every single day. But it still allows them to have the electives meet every other day. Now, the problem where that starts to break down at the high school level is the amount of time that's seat time that's required to get that credit. So, you don't have that credit requirement at our middle schools like you do at the high schools. So, that's what makes that, those schedules work well for middle school because they're going every day with the academics, yet they can still provide those electives. The high school, you have to get the credit and you have to do the seat time to get the credit. So, that's why they require a different schedule. And then, that's, unless, you know, Dr. Spiro has something to add to that, I let Dr. Decimours respond to the, to the other question because you are correct. There are some areas where we can get savings, transportation and overtime for our operators or fuel that we're not, you know, that we're not using and those type of things. So, Dr. Decimours?
All right. Good afternoon again. Yes, there are places in the budget where there are some items that are not being spent right now because of the situation that we're in. So, first of all, with food service funds, remember that is its own separate fund. And so, those food service funds can only be used for food service activities. We are, remember, still feeding students right now. So, those activities are going on. And the reimbursement that we receive through the Department of Agriculture for the meals that we're doing is not quite the same as what the reimbursement would have been for a breakfast or lunch, like in a regular scenario. And then also recall that we are still paying our employees now as well. So, the revenue to expense ratio that we're looking at right now, we are still doing the calculations about what that will look like through the end of the year in food service. We also have other areas within the general fund that we're not expanding areas in. So, think, for example, our fuel costs that we're, you know, saving by not transporting students, substitute costs because most, you know, there are very few substitutes that are in play at this point based on virtual education. So, those are, and overtime costs in terms of where we would typically have them in transportation for transporting our students. So, those are three major areas where we are going to be saving some funds through the end of the year. We're doing all of those calculations now and we plan on giving some information to the superintendent to be able to share with the board about what that looks like through the end of the year related to our budget, how that comes into play in terms of the large budget picture for next year, and then what types of things we believe that we could be bracing for for next year. There are still a lot of unknowns. We don't have any information yet from the Economic Development Office in terms of what the impacts they believe across the state will be to the budget. And then, once those are known, exactly how those budget impacts will be handled by the legislature. So, but the impact to us, we know the impact to the local economy statewide is substantial. Therefore, we have to prepare for various scenarios that the impact to our school district budget could also be substantial. So, our job is to be, is to look at all of those different things, create different scenarios, and then put some recommendations forward for the superintendent and the board that poises the district or postures us to be able to react to what any one of those scenarios would be. And it could take some time before we know what any of those are. That might have been a long answer to a short question, but did I cover what it was that you were looking for?
Thank you. Great. Okay. Board members, any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay. All right, Ms. Vaughn, and then we're going to have to move on because we have a lot, very, very short for Dr. Decimours. I'm wondering if we have any projections on how much we're going to lose our half-cent sales tax since, well, since the obvious.
You cut out in the first part. I think the question was, do we have any projections on? Do we have any projections on how much we're potentially losing for our capital budget because the tourists left early, you know, the shutdown of tourism and all the other things that have gone with these shutdowns? Obviously, we're bringing in a whole lot less in sales tax.
Right. So, that's part of the information we're working on. And the answer that I just gave, I kind of talked about specifically food service and general fund. But included within the items that we're working on projections for is capital as well, which would include our sales tax funds. As you mentioned, we know that at this point are substantial, but we don't, we don't yet have any concrete information from either the State's Department of Revenue or the Economic Development Office to really quantify that as such. We expect that we'll receive that within, or some indication of that within the next several weeks, which will allow us to then do some projections about what some, some of the different scenarios are that we could be facing over this, over next year. And then, of course, this could be several years. And then, of course, this could be several years in, you know, depending on we, it's unknown at this time what the impact will be and how long it will really take for us to rebound. And so we could be, of course, looking at our sales tax projections go out nine years, or that is the duration of our sales tax revenue that we have. And so we'll be having to do a new projection that looks out for the next nine years to determine what that impact will be. But until we get that information, we don't want to speculate too much. We want to be able to get some concrete data in order to draw that information up.
Sounds, thank you. Okay. So then, seeing no other, Ms. Morgan, did you have anything? No? Okay. All right. So then moving on, we'll look at the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. So Mr. Cliff, will you please address the item of public comment?
Yes. Pursuant to Executive Order 20-69 in the Department of Education directives dated March 17, 2020, notice were provided to the public that all public comment would be accepted virtually by email. Virtual submission of public comment was required to be sent to the email address publiccomment@eschools.net at least two hours prior to this afternoon's meeting and are limited to 450 words to be consistent with Board Policy 1.11 related to times per speaker. I also understand we have one person in the chambers who will be presenting a live presentation. I will turn to him first. I will read the public comment directives as a reminder. I do want to let everyone know that we have reached the 60 comment limit per board policy. We we received 60 public comments as of 9:05 this morning. There are an additional 96 public comments, so that would be a total of 156 plus the live speaker. For those of the public comments that are over the 60, they will not be read in consistent with board policy, but they will be made part of the public record and available. I will note for the for the benefit of the public as well as the board members and staff that the bulk of those that are that came in after 61 beyond relate to the proposed schedule change. But there are some also that relate to a recommendation that a current Three Oaks Elementary Assistant Principal Tammy LaMaster be elevated to principal as apparently the current principal is retiring. So those are, I just wanted to give you guys a flavor of those as well as the public as to what will those that will not be read. In terms of the live speaker, I will turn it over to staff after I read the public comment, public comment portion. School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to staff, I believe Susan is there before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of those cards that are submitted. If you didn't, didn't not submit a card, I understand there's only one person there. But if you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this afternoon, the Chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you the opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding forum should be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such marks will remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. So I will turn it over to Susan or Jen, who are in the the chambers, and I will time it from here. What I'll do is I will add the timer and then once the timer is up, if the public commenter is still speaking, I will indicate with a raised hand. I've communicated with with staff and at that point they will shut off the microphone for for comment. So with that, if you'll please state your name for the record, for a public comment, it'll have to be unmuted. And once it's unmuted, I will start the timer on my end.
Okay, Pearl, 47-year resident. I think Dr. Atkins took some of the wind out of my sails, but let me read what I have here. I've waited a long time and I came down because I think you got to be a rocket scientist to do these submissions. And I'm not very savvy. I guess that's why I don't teach anymore. Good afternoon, Superintendent and Board. I'm happy the governor closes schools for the rest of the year. China's not reopening their schools either. This COVID-19 is not going away soon. I recommend you and the board continue the lockdown till June, which I mean for yourselves. Your lives are more important than the economy. I can't see opening everything up in May, but that's political, I guess. Dr. Atkins and I were science teachers. I'm pleased that I asked everyone to vote against any change in school times for next year. And I'm pleased that Dr. Atkins is postponing it and apparently is taking the wind out of my sails. That's rare. Everyone will be shell shocked to come back in August. No one needs any more changes. If you're so heck bent or hell bent on doing it, postpone it a year. Why and why are Dunbar and East High singled out for extra time? You're just getting a half a million dollar bus route to save money and then we're going to blow more money bussing kids around. It just doesn't make sense to me. I don't think that's called good fiscal responsibility. And it looks like, you know, that's kind of discriminatory with Dunbar and the East. You can't beat the kids over the head with a book. A Presbyterian minister told me you can't beat people over the head with the Bible. Instruct your principals to do discipline and keep the cell phones in the backpacks all day. I'll bet you'll see how much you you learn and you may not even need all this extended day. That's really what school was all about when I taught years ago. Dr. Spiro, and I know all of you have good intentions. Him and I spent three years in the classroom. We worked together. I have 38 years in now, so I expect you all to listen to me and listen on the side of the voice of experience. May God and my deceased beloved wife look over you and keep you all safe. But I don't think you should open this place up either, not next month. I don't care what all the federal government says and everything. Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Stay safe. I'm going.
Thank you. And I understand that was our only in-person public speaker. So I will continue with the email submissions. As a reminder to the board, staff and the public, the submissions are limited to 450 words per submission. There are a few that are longer than 450 words. The way we handled those are, we responded to advise the submitter that they exceeded the 450-word limit and allow them the opportunity to resubmit, I guess, to to redraft to come within the 450-word limit, some of which elected to do that. Otherwise, we advised if we did not hear from them, we would just stop speaking after 450 words as if the microphone would cut off. So I will note so that the board is aware when we're at some that that will will indicate that. I also wanted to advise the public at this moment before I get reading that the chat function has been turned off on Zoom to ensure that there is compliance with the Sunshine Law. So I want to make sure the public is aware of that. So I will begin now with the with the 60. First, D. Roa. We are writing to express our displeasure at having heard about the block schedule change during, during, in all caps, a pandemic without, without being in all caps, being funneled through the proper channels or forums. Our son is in the IB program and this impacts him greatly. If you would like to know why the parents and community distrust the board, this is it. If you want to know why we feel that you do not have the best interests of our children at heart, this is it. We are truly disappointed. This action is why leaders from our community rise up to run against board members. We expect to see a reversal of this decision to allow for proper review and input from all interested parties, discussion on serious alternatives and full, with full being in all caps, transparency. Thank you. Next, Tracy Burke. This schedule change is not, with not being in all caps, helping move toward the district's vision. This is a open quote world-class close quote mistake. It is beyond comprehension that there is no, with no being in all caps, public comment, board vote or consideration of the input collected from parents, students and teachers. The outcome will be more teacher shortages, decreased graduation rate, lower test scores, loss of programs, increased cost, with that being in all caps, lack of access for tutoring, loss of elective courses, worse GPAs and fewer college acceptances. If this is the open quote world-class school district, close quote, and in all caps, we are striving for. I'm sorry, is this the world-class school district we are striving for? Is this the legacy you want to leave behind? In all caps and in open quote, Lee County School District fails their students once again, close quote. Let that sink in. Next is Todd Bain. This letter is in response to the high school schedule change sent out on behalf of Dr. Atkins on Thursday, April 9. We, the Lee County voting public, feel that Dr. Atkins' decision to eliminate the current high school block schedule for 2020 to 2021 school year and to communicate this change during a global pandemic lacks empathy, integrity and professionalism and violates compliance with the Sunshine Law. We understand that Governor DeSantis declared a state of emergency with regards to the COVID-19 pandemic, but we feel that the schedule change discussion does not, with not being in all caps, meet the definition of quote emergency and quote defined in Policy 1.18. The district website states that both the superintendent and the school board, quote, "values the ideas of members in the community," close quote. This statement appears to be a fallacy given the timeline regarding this decision. Informal information was shared with some students and parents in mid-February. The February 25 Board Action Meeting had 13 public comments with three speakers addressing the scheduling topic. At the following March 10 Board Action Meeting, 23 public comments were made with 12 of those speakers addressing scheduling. The March 24 Board Action Meeting did not allow for public comment due to COVID-19 precautions and a lack of technical expertise in broadcasting the information to the public in a comprehensible manner. In fact, a motion was made by Dr. Atkins. In fact, a motion was made by Dr. Atkins based upon direction from his legal counsel to suspend this meeting for compliance with the Sunshine Law. In just a few short weeks, both students and parents advocating against this change will, with little to no direction, guidance or information provided by the district until the April 9 decision. A handwritten petition, open parenths, approximately 400 signatures, closed parenths, an online petition, open parenths, currently over 2,100 signatures, http://backslashbackslashchange.it backslash wy9shty2h, closed parenths, were started along with the media movement by students to have their voices heard by our district that claims to value the ideas of the community. As voting members of Lee County, we feel that Dr. Atkins misused his power to make a non-emergency decision. Our only recourse against the misuse of power by Dr. Atkins is through our elected school board members, and we are requesting the board's support during this election year. The district's vision to be a world-class school system will not be attainable if the district cannot follow its own guidelines regarding what constitutes a quote emergency and quote, and the right of the public to provide input. We, the voting public, are requesting that the schedule change be put on hold until the public can have the chance to properly weigh in on a decision of this magnitude and the district can provide us with tangible data showing the benefits of such a major change to the current system. Next is Beth Sealy. When our daughter enrolled at Fort Myers High School two years ago, we heard from the principal during the open house at FMHS that FMHS was an A-plus school, highly performing, superlative in student achievement and revered by college admissions staff among other accolades. Why would the district even consider changing what we were told is a very successful formula at FMHS? Moving away from block scheduling would be a mistake. And most importantly, this move is not wanted by the majority of students and parents who would be subject to the schedule change. Underperforming schools in the district should explore the reasons for their lack of success. But highly performing schools should not be experimented with to more closely emulate data in Broward Counties, as a letter from Dr. Atkins stated. There is nothing about large city, east coast urban education that should be looked to as a model for what our educators are doing here. There was no opportunity for public input regarding this subject. For this reason alone, you should stick with block scheduling until you solicit input from those whom you represent. It's only common sense to recognize that block scheduling is far superior to standard scheduling for high schools. It is similar to how they will learn in post-high, post-high school, trade school or college. Block scheduling eliminates all the additional wasted time involved in changing classes more often. Less hallway time, less time spent packing up to leave a class, then less time spent unpacking materials for a class. Block scheduling allows for in-depth discussion of topics while learning. Standard scheduling only allows for short bursts of instruction, hoping that students get it the first time. The impact this change will have on elective opportunities for our students is terrible. The leadership of this district knows that nearly all parents and students want these elective opportunities. You represent these constituents and have a responsibility to provide opportunity for quality electives during the school day. Drivers ed via virtual school? No thanks. Ceramics class or little wave childcare instruction online? Impossible. With your newfound revenue source in the form of sales tax dollars, surely budget concerns can be used yet again. Surely budget concerns can't be used yet again as an excuse to eliminate elective opportunities for our kids. Next is Annabelle, Annabelle Crater. Dear School Board Members, I appreciate and understand the reasoning behind having seven-period days. However, I do not think this is a great, a good idea, and I hope it can be changed. I love school and always take as many classes as I can. This year, I took all eight classes at school and one class online. Next year, I plan to do the same. Although the extra classes I wish to take are not graduation requirements, they are essential to giving me a well-rounded education and an opportunity to explore different subjects. It was already a difficult choice to figure out which classes I needed to give up so I wouldn't exceed the normal eight classes I have at school. As I previously mentioned, I'm even taking online classes so I can learn and explore more. I really don't want to have to choose more classes to give up for the next two years because a class period was taken away. I hope this decision for seven-day, day period, seven-period days can be reconsidered. Thank you so much. Christian Swoop. This is a message regarding the seven-day period transition, the seven, sorry. This is a message regarding the seven-period transition day. Many of us students do not, I think it's missing a word, but it says, many of us students do not to switch as it will put much pressure on us. It is also not fair to the people fully enrolled in a higher diploma program. They will get less electives than most students. Students barely got their voices expressed, as it is obvious we don't agree. Petitions have go on around to stop this movement. Amy McLaughlin, I'm sorry, Amy McLaughlin, and I'm reading these verbatim. I have been informed that there is a chance to offer a blended, open parenths, block and seven-class, closed parenths pilot option for the IB schools. I am writing you because I support this. My son is a current pre-IB freshman at Riverdale High School and my daughter graduated from the IB program at Riverdale last year. She is a freshman at FSU. IB students are in a different circumstance educationally. They are taking college-level classes and are under a great deal of pressure from day one. Block scheduling allows them the time and freedom to complete their course, their coursework in a thorough and intentional way. Since I am not an IB student, I ask my children for input as their lives are the ones being affected by the decisions we adults make. One, in our classes, 45 minutes is not enough for us to engage in meaningful conversation. If we were limited to that, just when the conversation began, the class would be ending. Two, I feel that I would not have the time I would need to complete the heavy IB and AP coursework for each of the seven classes on a daily basis. We need the alternate block days in order to complete our classwork in a way that we can both learn and complete it. Three, when it came time for IB oral presentations, 45 minutes would not be enough time for even one of the presentations to be completed as they are at times longer than that timeframe. Four, sometimes the coursework in IB is so tough and overwhelming, my two electives are the things that keep me going on a daily basis. Five, I don't want to have to choose between band and film. Under seven-day class periods, I would have to choose. My children work hard to stay in IB. Their coursework and expectations are held to a different standard. Why should their schedules be held to the same standard as everyone else? I am 100% not in favor of moving to a seven-class-per-day schedule. If this pilot is the only alternative, I ask that we consider it. These students need to have the chance to continue their excellence in education in a way that has already shown proven success. Thank you. Next, Olivia Wallace. I am currently a sophomore at Riverdale High School. I have concerns about the new seven-period schedule. Taking seven classes per day would add to my already overburdened workload. As an IB student on the eight-block schedule, I have an average of four hours of homework per night. As an IB student on the eight-block schedule, I have an average of four hours of homework per night, sometimes more, so seven classes would add more assignments per day, increasing my homework load. I also believe that an additional thirty extra minutes added to the school day interferes with the amount of time left for homework assignments to be completed. I personally would be arriving home from school much later than usual because I take the bus. I would have less time to complete my task before bed. I am also a student athlete. Having a more demanding school workload would discourage me from participating in sports. I would have less time to complete schoolwork due to the longer school day. Extracurricular activities are an important part of a well-rounded education, but I would be less likely to join sports again. The new seven-period schedule eliminates valuable electives for students like me who want to take art or music. Also, the schedule creates an imbalanced workload which increases the student's stress level. Stress interferes with my ability to learn effectively. Finally, I would also like to add that some students with after-school jobs would not be able to get enough work hours to help support their families. In conclusion, changing to a seven-period schedule would not benefit any student, especially students in the IB program. Our curriculum is challenging already. The seven-period schedule would only add to our workload, decrease time for homework assignment completion, reduce opportunities for meaningful electives, discourage involvement in after-school activities and increase stress. I respectfully request that Riverdale students keep the eight-block schedule. Thank you for your, for you, thank you for your consideration. Next is James Prendeville. His submission was one thousand one hundred and eighty-five words. It was not trimmed down, so I will read the first four hundred and fifty. The remaining words will be available as part of public record. My name is James Prendeville. I am a junior in the IB program at Fort Myers High School. I would like to talk about the effects of a seven-day period schedule from a student's point of view. First of all, as an IB student, I have binders, textbooks and notebooks for every class. With four classes per day, I have to carry a heavy bag full of books and supplies as every class requires at least two items. Although we have Chromebooks, we do not necessarily have less paper. All AP classes are paper-based as we are required to handwrite essays for AP exams. This is the same with IB classes. Similarly, math classes are impossible without a paper-based system. Therefore, although we are helpful, although they are helpful, computers have not replaced paper in schools to the extent that students would be able to carry seven classes worth of material daily. With the seven-period schedule, I would have to carry at least fourteen items per day. Stopping at a locker multiple times throughout the day is logistically impossible with our already shortened passing time. I would have to bring two backpacks every day into school in order to have all of my books and supplies. Our school has very strong sports programs. As a varsity athlete, I know that this new seven-period system would be impractical. Since there will be additional time added onto the school day, my wrestling team will not be able to start practice until later, resulting in us getting home later and having less time to complete homework. I, along with many other IB and AP students, have many hours of homework per night. Although a few minutes per day may not seem like a big difference, thirty extra minutes amounts to nearly four entire days, open parenths, ninety hours, closed parenths, that students could be sleeping per school year which is lost due to later practices. No matter how these ninety hours added to the school day are used, there is no way they can help high school students who already begin at seven in the morning to a greater extent than giving them sleep. Similarly, games and events that often end after nine PM will finish much later. The issue of having less time available could be amplified by an increased amount of homework. Seven teachers will assign homework per night rather than four. Certain classes assign large amounts of homework that take longer than one night to complete. Although it might be argued that less homework will be assigned per teacher due to shorter instructional time every day. I know from experience that teachers are often bad at communicating with each other, as I have, and that's where the four hundred and fifty words ends. Next up is a joint submission by Mr. and Mrs. Bill Hammond. Taking away the block schedule we currently have at Fort Myers High School would greatly impact the educational experience for my daughter's summer. She is in dual enrollment and plans to get a part-time job for her senior year. Driving from home near Sanibel to FMHS would create a problem with shorter classroom times. Having to haul books for all these classes every day is also going to be a challenge. Currently, the block schedule works great with kids in dual enrollment and gives them the opportunity to immerse themselves in a learning experience that may take a longer classroom time to get settled into. Art and music classes are a great example as there is warm-up time and cleanup time in those classes alone. Please consider not, with not being in all caps, taking away the block schedule. Next is Gary Howington. I request that the implementation of the decision to move from four-by-four block to non-block seven periods per day be delayed until the 2021 to 2022 school year. Per the published reasons for making this drastic change to our children's education, there appears to be no justification for urgent, with urgent being in all caps, implementation. Currently, per the district website, we have no schools performing below a open quote C, close quote, level. Zero failing schools. Comparing 2018 to 2019, LCSD had twenty schools improve at least, with at least being in all caps, one letter grade while twelve dropped no more than one letter grade. High school graduation rates are eighty-nine percent to ninety-nine percent with notable expectation, notable exceptions of Eastleigh, open parenths, which improved from a D to a C, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, closed parenths, and Dunbar falling well below. The data does not suggest an, open quote urgent, with urgent being in all caps, close quote, need to change and disrupt all schools. Forcing implementation of this misguided decision for the 2020 to 2021 school year during the current pandemic puts an undue and unnecessary burden on students. Open parenths, high school juniors who chose their education path. Again, open parenths, IB, Cambridge, et cetera, closed parenths, based on the expectation of a four-by-four block, closed original parenths. Staff transportation needs. COVID has not allowed appropriate time for community, student or teacher input. The implementation should be delayed until the 2021 to 2022 school year, giving students appropriate time to decide their education path. One of Dr. Atkins' main reasonings for these changes was to increase student, teacher-student interaction time. However, the additional time added to most schools will be used as transition time between the additional classes, adding no value to our children's education. On paper, it appears as though the students will receive additional interaction on a weekly basis. In reality, the shortened class period combined with time for review and getting students, quote, settled in, close quote, to each class will decrease, with decrease being in all caps, effective teaching time for all students and degrade the educational process. This decision based on Dr. Atkins' published statements makes no reasonable sense. It would only make sense if this decision is in fact being made to rearrange staffing needs and reduce teacher-staff headcount to address budget shortfalls. This decision is not in the best interest of our children's education and implementation should be delayed until the 2021, 2022 school year. Next is Lonnie Howington. As a parent of a FMHS IB junior, I respectfully request that you rescind the decision to change high school schedules for the 2021 school year. With the spread of COVID-19 and the lack of support from students, teachers and community members for this schedule change, we ask you again, with again being in all caps, to delay any changes for the next school year. We have bigger problems now to manage without adding huge changes that were not given proper due diligence. This is my second time addressing the LCSB, open parenths, two dash twenty-eight, closed parenths, concerning the 2021 school year schedule changes. We ask you again, with again being in all caps, that the district delay this decision for one year and undertake a thorough review of best education scheduling practices to develop a system that will meet the needs of all our varied learners. We ask that a committee made up of teachers, parents, administrators and board members be established to study this complex and nuanced topic. It is only with careful thought, input and research that the best and most successful outcomes are achieved. We teach our children to be critical thinkers and develop well-supported arguments and strategic plans. We owe it to them, we, we, sorry, we owe it to them that the adults in their lives will do no less than we expect of them, particularly when the changes we are making will most directly impact their education. Next up is Julie Redding. Hers is six hundred and sixty-two words, so again, I will stop at the four hundred and fifty-word limit. My name is Julie Redding Leonard and I am a parent of a FMHS graduate and current FMHS IB junior. I am writing to express my concern over the proposed high school schedule change from a block schedule, open parenths, offering eight courses, closed parenths, to a seven-period day schedule, open parenths, offering seven courses, closed parenths. For the record, I oppose this schedule change for the following reasons. First and foremost, this change will offer students fewer course selections. In a four-year period, this would mean four fewer classes. Math, art, music, business law, accounting, fewer AP and IB class opportunities, open parenths, which translates to college credit, closed parenths, auto mechanics, history classes, English and literature classes, language classes, et cetera. This translates to potentially four years of foreign language, four years of advanced math that a student cannot take. Moreover, it diminishes the opportunity for students to take higher level or advanced courses, especially during their junior and senior years. This makes them less competitive for selective colleges and universities. It also forces a quote dumbing down, close quote, for those students who are ambitious and want to take as many courses and learn as much as they can during their high school years. Second, the proposed shorter schedule reducing eighty-minute classes to fifty-minute classes will take away the ability for teachers and students to complete, completing in all caps, in-class labs. Most science labs, open parenths, biology, chemistry, physics, closed parenths, take more than fifty minutes to complete. We don't want, we don't want to, nor can we afford to fall further behind, open parenths, as a state, region or nation, closed parenths, in our student science classes and aptitudes. What will this do to our budding scientists who may, for all we know, invent the cure for COVID-19? This change will adversely impact, sorry, this change will adversely, with adversely being in all caps, impact IB students, especially junior IB students. Current, with current being in all caps, IB junior students will not, not in all caps, be able to take electives next year as they will be locked into, locked into being in all caps, their current academic schedules. Only sophomore pre-IB students will be able to arrange their schedules to take one, one being in all caps, elective during their junior and senior years. This change will not allow IB students to take full, with full being in all caps, open parenths, sixty-plus minutes, closed parenths, IB practice exams. IB students must take and pass additional tests, open parenths, not written by nor graded by their teachers, but instead by independent IB teachers, closed parenths. These tests are to demonstrate that students complete mastery of the IB subjects they have studied. While IB students can obtain their high school diploma, they must take and pass additional IB exams in order to obtain their IB diploma. These are not given until after graduation. Mastery of these IB classes and earning their IB diploma additionally deem them eligible for college credit and, and being in all caps, Florida's Bright Futures Program. Florida's Bright Futures is aimed at keeping Florida's brightest students in, and that's where we end at four hundred and fifty words. Sorry. Next up is TM Shannon. I have owned property near Cypress Lakes High School for over twenty-five years and have been a supporter of the arts in schools for as long as I can remember. I am gravely disappointed regarding the thought and process of moving from a block schedule to a seven-period schedule. Many students need jobs for survival in these economic times, notwithstanding the post-COVID times we will be in soon. Expecting a student to thrive in school, in the arts, do seven classes of homework and help support their future college dreams, open parenths, or their family, or purchase food, or help with medical care, closed parenths, is simply irresponsible of each of you as elected officials. Our Lee County students deserve better. They are already living in a very stressful environment with higher college admission, admission expectations, a COVID environment, no prom, no eighth-grade trips or dances and so much more. We must do better than spring this level of change on them. Plus, we need to look at the students who are not improving their test scores and focus, with focus being in all caps, on them. The end, the end must justify the means. It does not. Next is Angela Fishler. As a parent of two FMHS IB 2021 seniors, I urgently request that you rescind the decision to change school schedules or at a minimum, delay the implementation until the 2021, 2022 school year. Research links block scheduling, sorry, research links block scheduling to higher GPAs, lower failure and dropout rates, fewer discipline problems and higher student-teacher satisfaction. In the parenths, there is a link to an AASA.org website which will be available in the public records. Block schedule creates a quote saner school day by slowing the pace, reducing homework and freeing up more time for hands-on learning and collaboration. Things that make learning stick better and take pressure off students, close quote, with a site to a website, NEAToday.org. Schedule change would reduce efficacy and add stress to students and teachers who have already experienced unprecedented hardships. More information to process each day and less time per class period for individualized instruction, cooperative learning and reflection with diminished depth of understanding. Games and learning, seven minutes per class per day, best case would be diminished by nearly doubling transition time, open parenths, attendance, homework, assignments slash check, settling down, engaging, lab setup, closed parenths. Multiple consecutive testing days would be required for test structure to prepare for IB and AP tests. Multiple tests per day, open parenths, unavoidable, closed parenths. Carrying books for seven classes isn't feasible, open parenths, no time to access lockers between classes, closed parenths. Twenty twenty-one IB senior concerns. While twenty twenty-two IB seniors can plan for electives in both junior and senior years, twenty twenty-one IB seniors would lose their only elective. Taking TOK seminar simply adds workload and stress to an already elongated school day. Twenty twenty-one IB seniors need an elective in their standard school day to explore academic-professional options, express themselves artistically, burn energy to combat stress, indoor strength in college applications. Arts participation yields well-rounded students and is correlated with higher academic achievement. Yearbook and early childhood development programs will lose IB participants, hurting both the students passionate about those programs and the programs themselves. Open parenths, some IB students wouldn't receive certifications they worked for, for two and a half years, closed parenths. Some students will drop IB to not lose their only elective. Limiting students' abilities to express and differentiate themselves through elective damages, damages students around, reduces enjoyment of their high school experience and potentially harms mental health and college competitiveness. LCSB slash FMHS's excellent reputation would suffer. If LCSB insists on this change, delaying implementation would allow twenty twenty-one seniors to graduate per their original academic plan and allow teachers and underclassmen to prepare for the change. The change decision was reached without due process or sufficient stakeholder input. The first article linked above, quote, "A schedule change mandated through administrative edict has a negative impact, negative effect on implementation," close quote. And the second recommends a, quote, "deliberative and transparent," close quote, "two-year process to transition to a new schedule." Please rescind this poorly executed decision and readdress changes deliberately and transparently or at least implement in 2021, 2022. Next up is Deborah Howington. Let me put you in the shoes of an IB junior. We sit at home now, waking up to stare at a screen for the day. People continue to say, quote, "It will be okay. We are all in the same boat," close quote. However, this is not the case. We are in the same storm, not the same boat. Some students have family game nights while others grieve losses. Some excel with online homework while others struggle with learning disabilities. Some continue to live their lives as normal whereas others fall into depression because school was their only escape from a struggling home life. It is true that not all students are heavily affected by the board's decision. However, there are many who are and it should not be taken lightly. This may, quote, this may be, quote, just another junior class, end quote, board members, but these are real people we are discussing. This is a wake-up call. As for myself, I struggle with OCD and anxiety. An upcoming exam meant that I came home from school and did not studying, did not stop studying until I had to go to bed. After many panic attacks and long nights, I considered, I considered dropping. The IB program led me to struggle with mental health to the point where I even quit athletics my senior year because I did not have enough time in a day to breathe. I was diagnosed with depression my junior year. The intensity of a seven-day schedule places excessive stress on students. There will be a rise in mental health disorders, a rise in the number of people who drop, a rise in skipping school because of being unprepared for seven exams in one day. There is not yet statistics to show the negative effects this will have on IB students, just like there are not yet statistics to show the negative effects COVID-19 will have on our economy. However, it is inevitable that the bad outweighs the good in both circumstances. You may not see the specific negative effects this will have on a student. Therefore, I am telling you. If the majority are accepting of this change, there are still a few who are not. Those few have the potential to suffer serious mental health struggles, maybe even to the point of suicidal thoughts because it is too much stress. To implement this change at a time when stress is already through the roof is inconsiderate, bottom line. This should scare you. This is not meant to exaggerate the issue. I am here to tell you a story from a real human, a I am here to tell you a story from a real human, a real student, who has a real life outside of school. We are in the same storm, not the same boat, with the last sentence being in all Italians. You give me one moment, I need a drink first. Thank you. Next up is Damian Simmons. All of the classes that IB students take in their junior and senior years are vital when it comes to the subject of passing the final IB exam. I have heard that possibly one of the solutions would be, would be to change the foreign language or science IB class into a one-year class because it is categorized as, quote, SL, close quote. This idea is beyond horrible. There is no possible way we could comprehend a language enough to speak fluently, fluently and analyze text in just three school years, and even less for some students who do not join the IB program their freshman year. The same goes for IB sciences. This change has not been understudied for some time to be able to implement it in a half, half of a school year and summer's break worth of time, especially when there are bigger and more pressing matters at hand. Next is Sophie Bane. I am a junior at Fort Myers High School in the IB program and the music program. I am reaching out to the school board regarding the schedule change for next year. The IB program does not fit in the traditional seven-period class schedule. The workload and homework from having my classes every day will become unmanageable. There will not be enough time to get through the lessons, labs, and tests. Why do two high schools get a different class schedules and the others don't? Today, I received a course selection form for next year, and if I choose to have an elective, I am forced to do an online class. Right now, I'm struggling with virtual learning and online classes, which I have to do now because of COVID-19. Why is the school board switching the schedule now with so much going on? Please hear my voice and the other students, thank you for your time. Next is Virginia Bane. I am a junior at Fort Myers High School in the IB program and the music program. I am reaching out to the school board regarding the schedule change for next year. The IB program does not fit in the traditional seven-period class schedule. The homework and the, the IB program is not the same as in the traditional classes. The workload and homework from having my IB classes every day is not manageable. In the shorter class periods, there will not be enough time to get through the lessons, labs, and tests. Today, I received the course selection form for next year, and if I choose an elective, I am forced to do an online class. I am struggling with virtual learning online classes now. Why is the school board switching the schedule now with so much going on with COVID-19? Also, please explain why two high schools get a different class schedules and others not. Please hear my voice, thank you. Next up is Chris McLaughlin. I have been informed that there is a chance to offer a blended, open parenths, block, and seven-class, closed parenths, pilot option for IB schools. I am writing to you because I support this. My son is a current pre-IB freshman at Riverdale High School, and my daughter graduated from the IB program at Riverdale last year. Reasons to consider the pilot. IB, IB students need the extra class time to engage in meaningful conversation with their teachers and classmates. IB students need time in between class days to work on assignments. I have seen my kids study and plan like adults. The lessons learned in scheduling their time are lifelong. Block scheduling allows them the flexibility to do that. My daughter's IB oral presentation practice in class was essential to our success. When it came time for the real thing, they need longer than forty-five minutes to prepare. My son's two electives are band and film. Those are the two healthy activities that keep him interested and out of trouble. Please do not take away the chance for him to have both, they are healthy outlets for him. My children work hard and they are good kids. They enjoy IB and hold themselves to a high standard. If we don't give them the class time and tools, how can we support them? Please consider the pilot, the kids deserve the chance, thank you. Next up is Cooper McLaughlin. Hello, I am writing in support of a blended, open parenths, block, and seven-class, closed parenths, pilot option for IB schools. I am currently enrolled in the pre-IB at Riverdale High School, and I am in the ninth grade. These are the reasons I support this. Number one, my first reason I support block scheduling for IB students is that it gives me an opportunity to work on my classes, schoolwork, as a staggered, in a staggered way. For example, on an even day, I would work on my odd days' homework for my classes. This allows me to make sure I get my work done on time and with quality. Without this, I wouldn't be able to properly manage, properly time manage, resulting in more stress. Number two, my second reason is that although IB students go to the same school as the general education, our schoolwork is more strenuous and requires more critical thinking and thought to be completed. If we were to go to a seven-period day, the material for our classes would be rushed and not properly thought, also resulting in more stress and unnecessary problems. Please help, help me be successful in school and allow me to successfully pass IB. Me and most others that are in IB rely on this block scheduling to succeed, thank you. Next is Jenny Jacoby. Hello, I am Jenny Jacoby and am writing on behalf of the schedule change. For over a month, I worked tirelessly with other students to try to identify the exact details of this change and to gather public opinion on the matter. We did our best to present you with our side of the argument, but clearly this was not heard. I would argue not even considered. You praise the Cape Coral High School newspaper for speaking up and getting involved while simultaneously planning a change that would eliminate it. I was guaranteed a set number of electives when I joined IB at Cape, uh, at Cape High, and now my only option in keeping my sole elective may be to take a class online. Now, as I write this letter, I sit here thinking about how I already wake up at four-thirty most days to run before school and am up till eleven at night doing homework, studying, and working on extracurriculars. So how will I fit this online class, fit this online class in? Would the school board like me to compromise part of my life to allow them to install, instill a schedule change upon us that is clearly not wanted? The only thing that has actually been clear in this decision-making progress is that the students are the least of concern. This is a money problem, it always has been, and is being passed off as a way to enhance education. But let's be clear, the so-called extra-student, uh, to-teacher time does not exist. Those fifteen minutes added on to the day will be spent in the halls. When you put the schedule into reality, you see the accumulation of minutes wasted transitioning between classes. Not only in the hallways and as students unpack their now-seven-class load bookbag, backpacks, but mentally, as they try to jump to a completely new subject in less than an hour. Had this been about students, there would have been much more thorough research devoted to the matter that took this into account. The seven-period day would, uh, have also not been forced upon schools so strongly. Instead, the voices of the many who spoke, again, spoke against this would have been listened to, and each school would have been able to make their own personal scheduling choice. But no, this change was made so more teachers could be cut to free up more money. Cape Coral High School had a quarter-million-dollar budget cut last year and has already had to get extremely creative in how to manage that, or how to best manage that. So I asked the school board, is that not enough? I challenge you all to reprioritize your values and remember your primary interest is students, always. Next is John Shannon. I will be an incoming freshman this fall, and I was very disappointed to learn about the change from block scheduling to a seven-period bell schedule. This change heavily affects me due to my medical history. I have had to get medical treatments that last up to ten hours every three weeks since I was one month old. I previously went to a school that had seven classes per day, and making up the coursework outside of school was very difficult, especially with my, my participation in extracurricular activities and sports. I really enjoyed the five, five slash five block schedule I had in middle school. Due to there being fewer classes each day, I was able to easily learn what I missed and complete the assignments on my own time while still participating in the extracurricular activities I enjoy. While I am grateful that my teachers are very understanding, I know there are teachers that will be more strict with regard to deadlines, even if I or another student has an excused absence. I can't imagine what the makeup work would be like for a student that misses a week of school due to sickness, hospitalization, or other unforeseeable circumstances while keeping up with their schoolwork and extracurricular activities. Thank you for your time, and I hope you reconsider the seven-period bell schedule. Next is Jayden, uh, Bradish. My name is Jayden Bradish. I am currently a junior in the IB program at Cape Coral High School. I am writing this comment in opposition to the decision to change next year's schedule to seven-period days. Although I understand that there is a supposed more amount of time face-to-face with teachers, my schedule for senior year is going to be severely affected. For one, many of my teachers plan for IB and AP practice tests, which, if the schedule changes to around fifty-four minutes per class, we will have to spread these tests out in two class periods. These tests are being practiced by us to make sure we will pass the exams that correspond to them. We are not going to have enough time in one fifty-four-minute class period to do these practice exams. The purpose of these exams is to use the given, uh, the, the given time ranging from sixty to eighty minutes to complete the exams. These exams are not paused when we have to take them. We will not have the proper practice to complete these, these exams if we have to pause and complete them over a span of two days. In addition, with this past schedule change, we will be losing the opportunity of an elective. The IB diploma program has seven required classes. This means that every student in an IB diploma program will not have, uh, will not have an elective. For some of my peers, this means they will not be able to obtain a certification to become a pharmacy technician, be able to pursue their passion in journalism with the school newspaper, or be able to obtain an additional college credit through an AP class. Personally, I love electives because I am a student who enjoys the essence of learning. I love exploring what the world has to offer and through electives. I can further expand my exploration. This year, I was able to take AP Environmental Science, getting a vast perspective on our world, including, including learning about energy pollution and conservation, for example. Next year, I was planning on taking AP European History to get a clear understanding of comparative politics and ideologies in Europe throughout time. Now, I am not going to be able to continue to explore and instead be limited solely to my IB classes. Kindly reconsider your decision concerning the implementation of a schedule change for the 2020 to 2021 school year. Us students would appreciate it if the members could please rediscuss this issue and try to come up with a solution that could please the students and the members. Thank you for taking the time to read this comment. Next is Jackson Castellano. Hello, my name is Jackson Castellano, and I am writing you today about the recent schedule change made by the school district moving to a seven-period schedule rather than the eight-period block schedule. This provides a dilemma for me as I am an IB student and have seven required classes for the IB program. However, my eighth class is my elective, jazz band, and that class is very important to me. I wish to attend, I wish to attend music school after high school. And to attend music school, there is an audition. It would be, it would very much hurt my chances during my audition if I have to go a long period of time without a music class because I'm ordered to remain in IB. So I am left with the choice of continuing in, continuing in and hurting my chances of attending music school or dropping IB in order to remain in my music class and risk losing scholarships that I joined IB with the intention of receiving. I am aware of the, I am aware the district has proposed a solution that involves moving to TOK, to the digital setting. However, this puts an additional stress on students and teachers. Personally, I believe it would be best to remain using the eight-period block schedule. Next is Vicky Gardenhouse. There is nobody I know that has agreed to this schedule change. My IB student is losing her elective. This is not fair to these kids. My child and her friends are devastated. If my child wants any classes in the arts, she will have to take online classes. Are you kidding me? How is this beneficial to the students? After homework and seven classes, they have to, they have to also take online classes? Keep the four-by-four, add forty minutes to the day, ten minutes per class. This would work. Or have traditional students do a seven-period day and the IB students keep their four-by-four. This whole thing is ridiculous and is hurting our students. Next is Hannah Simon. Hello, this is about the email we got about the next year's school schedule change to a seven-period day. I am a junior in IB and will be a senior in 2021. I am one of the captains of the Haquettes dance team at Cape Coral High School, and I would be crushed if I couldn't be on the team my last year of high school anymore since dance is my only elective right now. Dance is a way for me to stay in shape and express who I am. I know the school board is trying to do something to please everyone. It was just, I was just letting you know my concern and hoping you will take this into consideration. Thank you so much for letting me email you about my concerns. Next is Don Guruli. The determination and communication of the change to a seven-period day for high schools was handled incredibly poor in both timing, lack of public comment, and the use of statistics and data that appear to be mined for the sole purpose of supporting the predetermined decision. A decision that looks to be made with only the objective of reducing the number of teachers required to support the class schedule. If there is an insurmountable financial burden to support the current model, then state that. But using misrepresented data to force this ill-time decision through is unacceptable. The letter sent to parents and the subsequent document posted for tomorrow's board meeting gave very little confidence that this is a good decision for our students, especially high-performing students. The document takes pieces of disconnect, disconnected information and cobbles it together in a misleading manner, including citing a block schedule study conducted on elementary schools in California to validate the decision for our high schools. Additionally, putting together sample, simple math to show that having seven classes will produce more time per class, with per class being in all caps, than eight classes is condescending and in no way supports the notion that seven-period day produces better college-prepared students. Of course, dividing the school year by seven periods instead of eight produces more class time in those seven classes. That is fourth-grade math. Additionally misleading is the increased, uh, twelve-hundred-and-sixty minutes per class fails to mention that this is achieved by adding an additional fifteen minutes to every day, or the equivalent of twenty-seven-hundred extra minutes. With the updated bell schedule, students will double the amount of time in hallways, changing classes, using up, using up more than half of the added time in the school day. Open parenths, I will not go into issues arising from any, from additional hallway time, closed parenths. What is omitted in the additional time rationale is the impact of missing out on exposure to eight semesters of subject matter through their high school years, including electives and additional AP classes. We constantly hear about preparing our students to be workforce and college-ready. This proposal only looks to increase school slash district grade and attendance quotas. Both key factors in funding calculations, but not developing the most well-rounded students. Colleges are looking for applicants with a broad range of experience, not individuals with limited exposure. Considering, consider letting the individual schools decide what is best for, quote, their students, uh, I'm sorry, quote, their, close quote, students. Student assignment is designed to match the student to the programs that best match their interests, and some interests are best served by an eight-block schedule. Thank you for reconsidering. Next is Laura Wright, and her submission was eight-hundred-and-sixty-three words, so again, I will stop at four-hundred-and-fifty. I am writing as a parent of a high school student at Cypress Lakes, Cypress Lake High School, who is both a, a Center for the Arts and AP Capstone student and opposed to changing from a block schedule to seven-period day. I am also writing as a psychologist, taxpayer, and voter. Although I appreciate the thoroughness of the report posted, I have several concerns about how well it applies to the current issues regarding changing the schedule from four in-depth, deep-dive classes a day to seven. First, I am thrilled that the students in Lee County, East Lee County, have continued to excel and improve across several metrics. I do have concerns about comparing your county to others with varying socioeconomic and demographic statistics. Yet, in figure one-point-seven, only four counties that do not use a block schedule rank above us. Also, two counties that do employ a block schedule have an, quote, A, end quote, grade. Open parenths, Miami-Dade and Palm Beach, closed parenths, which shows that it is possible to be both on a block schedule and retain the, quote, A, end quote. I spent several hours this past weekend looking at the meta-analytic peer review data, and it appears that there is no real consensus regarding block schedules versus the traditional model. Most studies are not robust enough to endorse clear outcomes. True meta-analytic data rather than individual studies are much more helpful in making policy decisions. It is also important not to extrapolate data from individual studies to other groups. The first study cited, authored by Su Jinzhe and Robert Wassmer, titled, quote, "The Impact of Learning Time on Academic Achievement", close quote, was conducted, quote, "using regression analysis and data set drawn from California's elementary school sites", close quote. And the terms, the phrase "California's elementary school sites" was highlighted. I would argue that this data cannot be used to support your argument for high school students losing, quote, elective, end quote, courses. Open parenths, which, for many of our high, high-achieving students, are AP classes, closed parenths. I don't want to get into just citing individual studies, but this one, open parenths, peer-reviewed and meta-analytic of fifty-eight studies, closed parenths, backs up my previous point. And there's, and she cites to a title called "An Analysis of Research on Block Scheduling", authors Zapata, Sally J., Mayers, R. Stewart, Review of Educational Research, Volume Seventy-Six, Number One, Pages One Thirty-Seven to One Seventy, Spring, Two Thousand Six. In this analysis of fifty-eight empirical studies of high school block scheduling, that was highlighted. The authors report find, report findings in and across five groupings. With groups, data was, were inconsistent, data being, data were inconsistent, being highlighted, regarding whether teachers' practices changed, but teachers believe that but teachers believed that staff development was necessary to teach in a block schedule. Block scheduling appears to increase student grade point averages and improve the school climate, but the results regarding its effects on standardized test scores and attendance were inconsistent. The last paragraph was in all, was all highlighted. Across studies, the findings indicate that A, research studies omit key information, B, teachers and students may view block scheduling positively, open parenths, but, and that's the cutoff of four-hundred-and-fifty words. Next is Maria R. N. Sebia. I am writing you because I have, I've been informed about the possibility to adopt a blended, open parenths, block and seven-class, closed parenths pilot option for IB schools. As a mother for an IB student at Riverdale High School, I totally support this idea. There are a few reasons to adopt the pilot choice for IB. IB curriculum requires extra-time classes, extra-time class to a, I'm sorry. IB curriculum requires extra-time class to allow students to engage in meaningful conversations with teachers and classmates. IB students need time in between class to work on assignments and a seven-day class could definitely have a negative impact on that. My daughter works hard between classes and uses this time wisely. My daughter's two electives are theater and film. Those are the two healthy activities that keep her interested and develops her intellect. Please do not take away the chance for her to have two electives that could only damage more than help. My child is a very good kid. She works hard every day and for her, school and IB program are very important. I personally think we have to support IB children and give them all the tools they need to get the best out of them. Please consider the pilot. They deserve it. Kindly regards and thank you so much. Next is Emmy Shannon. I was disappointed by the email my family received regarding the seven-period bell schedule for the 2020 to 2021 school year. As an IB student who is heavily involved with the arts department at my school, this really affects me and the decisions I will have to make about my schedule going into my senior year. I will likely need to choose between dance and choir, programs I have been involved with since freshman year and have served leadership positions on. Colleges look for commitment and leadership experience when accepting students into their school. By being forced to choose between these classes due to seven-period, uh, bell schedule, I will look unattractive to these schools, which may affect my acceptance to the school. Since this, since this decision has come out, I have learned that several of my friends are being burdened with the same decision, choosing arts or choosing academics. Alongside this decision weighing upon me, I have done research about what schools do nationally and internationally with their schedule to keep high test scores. Several of these schools use a block schedule with three to five classes a day and have an advisory and or quote flex, end quote, period built into their school day. The Yokohama International School in Japan uses this block schedule with an advisory period and has had tremendous success. Just this past school year, the school had a ninety-eight percent pass rate with their IB program. In comparison, the international pass rate of the program is seventy-seven percent. I urge you to learn from what these schools are doing and implement it to the classrooms in our community. While being in school, I have found that students perform better on tests when the teacher is engaged and provides innovative and fun ways for students to learn the material. As students, we are able to retain the information better because we are able to correlate a topic to an activity we did in class. Instead of changing to a seven-period bell schedule, observe the top-performing teachers, teaching style and encourage other teachers to follow in their footsteps. Thank you for your time and I hope you reconsider the seven-period bell schedule. Next is Stein Blacker. I have been informed that there is a chance to offer a blended, open parenths, block and seven-class, closed parenths pilot option for IB schools. I am very much in support of this. My son is a current pre-IB freshman at Riverdale High School. Reasons to consider the pilot. IB students need the extra time to engage in meaningful conversation with their teachers and classmates. Having to rush to seven different classrooms every day will take that away from them. IB students have so much homework and need time in between class days to work on assignments. IB students will lose an elective with the seven-class day. This will be a huge disappointment for my son and other IB students. Please consider the pilot for IB students. Thank you. Next is Michaela McLaughlin. I have been informed that there is a chance to offer a blended, open parenths, block and seven-class, closed parenths pilot option for IB schools. I am writing you because I support this. My brother is a current IB freshman at Riverdale High School and I graduated from the IB program at Riverdale last year. I am writing with my own personal reasons to consider the pilot as a former IB student. IB students need the extra class time to have actual conversations with teachers and classmates. Our discussions take time to get started and don't need to be interrupted in forty-five minutes. We need time in between class days to work on assignments. Block scheduling is a key to success. Now that I am in college, the skills I learned in time management and IB were crucial. I am way ahead of the curve. The oral presentation has to be practiced in class. We need longer than forty-five minutes to prepare. We need electives. It is, it's imperative for our well-being that we are well-rounded in our college applications. It's harder to get into school now even with IB. Please consider the pilot. My brother deserves a chance. If you need to add time, add the time. Don't take away the program that has been proven to be successful. And my taking away block scheduling, trust me, these kids will not stay in IB. They will go dual enrollment because they will think it's easier than roughing out IB in seven classes every day. Help them. Vote yes on the pilot. Thank you. Next is Raimi Hall. Good afternoon. I hope you all are staying healthy. Thank you to the members who followed up with me this week. Mrs. Giavennelli, Mrs. Gittens, Mrs. Vaughn, Mrs. Jordan, and Mrs. Morgan. I appreciate you hearing my concerns. Mrs. Patrika, it's disappointing you failed to respond. I was shocked to learn that the LCSD was moving ahead with a major schedule change in the midst of a pandemic while failing to give the board proper notice or a quality briefing explaining the plan. The timing of this scheduling change is horrible. The announcement caused unnecessary pressure and stress in an already overstressed, in all caps, time. The fact that the board was kept out of the loop of this plan shows that the superintendent lacks all respect for your role as elected officials and the fact that the leadership was instructed to tell the public this horrible plan was a board decision is insubordination. While data exists arguing the block scheduling is not the best for students, the reason for this change is not student-motivated. Many districts that have moved away from block, in all caps, did keep it in place for accelerated programs, even having different bell schedules in the same school. Traditional seven-day periods are best in low-performing schools. But ironically, in this plan, the lowest-performing school in Lee County will not be part of it. A seven-day period is not feasible for IB, ACE, arts, Cambridge, or Capstone. Stakeholder slash community input was not, in all caps, sought. Student advisory was never consulted. It was never discussed in middle school or high school SAC meetings. And sadly, teachers were not asked. Incoming freshmen, sorry. Incoming freshmen should have been told prior to making commitments. Now ninth graders have committed to high school programs with no out, as they do not hold a school assignment seat. Frankly, I would not have chosen IB for my son as the seven-period day in lack of electives is not cohesive with IB. While it is being rumored that the LCSD is admitting they messed up with this plan and are willing to roll it back a year, this issue here is the total and complete lack of accountability between you and the superintendent and the ongoing pattern it has established with the board. Lee County needs a major change, major change being in all caps. Education is not a one-size, in all caps, fits-all, and we need a leader who is willing to tailor education to the needs of the community. Middle schools cannot have block if high schools are traditional. High schools need later start times, need later start times being in all caps. School assignment must, in all caps, be addressed. Motion to delay this plan and act for the community. Next is Jay Roa. We have a, yes?
Yes, Mr. Craig. I'm gonna ask if we can take a recess. I, I think you might need one because you've gone a long time and read a lot. Thank you so much. And I think we have some board members that do need a break, so if we can take a ten-minute recess, would that be okay with everyone?
That would be very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll, we'll recess for ten minutes. The time is three fifteen. We'll be back at three twenty-five. Thank you all.
How many more do you think you have?
Um, I'd say I have a little over two thirds of the way done. I'll try to read faster.
No, you're doing an awesome job and I'm glad we took a break then.
I am, it was definitely needed and I saw that I had, uh, that you guys were trying to get ahold of me. Like after I looked up, so I'm, I'm thank you.
Okay, okay, so we can, we'll resume and finish that and then get on with the rest of the meeting. I appreciate everybody's patience.
Okay, next up is Jay Roa. Uh, we have a child in the IB program and are asking that you consider alternatives instead of seven periods. There are other options designed for this issue being presented today such as blended, open parenthens, block and seven class, closed parenthens, pilot option for IB schools. The IB program entails a great amount of dedication and tons of work and projects. You are punishing gifted and intellectually advanced students by pushing academic courses only and limiting their creativity and opportunities to expand on other interests such as business class, JROTC, sports, et cetera. Even limiting involvement in after school clubs that are beneficial for career development and life lessons. You cannot compare the work of IB students to that of regular classes. Next is Jake Moreland. My name is Jake Moreland and I am currently an IB student in my junior year attending Riverdale High School. I have some serious concerns not only with the nature of the current four by four versus seven class schedule debate, but with the way in which it was handled. As far as communication is concerned, I feel as if there was little to, it's a none regarding the implemented, implementation of this idea with almost no opportunity for public comments. The seven class schedule as a whole also simply does not work for the IB program as a whole. And while I understand how it may be better for non-IB kids, the existing plans for implementing the seven class schedule into IB schools is inherently flawed. The plans either place restrictions on the SL classes taken by IB students, disregarding the fact that many IB students take four HLs and two SLs as opposed to the standard three and three, giving one of the HL significantly less time than is required. Or plans revolve around the shortening of restrictions of the TOK class, undervaluing the role it plays in IB students' lives. The argument that IB students receiving more time will aid their studies in the long run is also fallacious by nature as it disregards the very true fact that not all time is made equal. I would much rather attend one hour and a half of calculus class than four broken half hour calculus classes. Making the classes frequent but shorter eliminates the possibility for long, hour and a half long tests, which are extremely beneficial in preparing for some of the IB and AP exams, which can take upwards of three hours. And a higher frequency in classes means more interruptions in lectures, more time spent simply on review and less time to practice material shortly after it is learned, which is arguably the most efficient way to retain it. Overall, while the newly proposed scheduling system may be beneficial for non-IB students, the fact of the matter is it doesn't work for IB students and therefore the blended schedule of giving the best of both worlds should be established. Are we, are we supposed to move to a different Zoom platform or are we, are we okay staying on this?
Um, I think this one times out at four. I'm waiting for Mr. Eldon to give us a heads up.
Okay, well, I'll keep reading while, uh, while we wait for Andrew.
Thank you.
This is Darryl. I've got the, I've got a second meeting scheduled just in case this one cuts off at four hard.
Okay, alright, so then at that time we'll just, what do we do? Just go into our email and join again?
Alright, we, we are trying to extend this current, yeah, current session now.
Okay.
In the off event that it does, just please go to your email and click the link. We should be good.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much. We'll, we'll do that. And then, so go ahead, Mr. Quick, you can.
Next up, um, Tuesday Shannon. I am writing today to show my support for maintaining our current block schedule in all Lee County high schools. I oppose moving to a seven period class day. I will have both an IB student and a traditional student in high school for the 2020-21 school year. I feel strongly that current block schedule is best for both of my children. For all IB, AP, arts, AICE students in all of our schools, the longer classroom periods provides added continuity of instruction. It has taken our teachers time to adjust to teaching this way. However, it aligns well with international IB and AP standards of testing. For all traditional students, block scheduling allows them to focus on four topics of homework and test studying per night plus allows them time to reach out to study groups or the teacher if they are struggling in a specific area. Many of our current high school students work jobs. Whether they are supporting personal desires, their family or saving for college, the job is an important part of their life. Having subject, having, having seven subjects of homework will cause some students to quit or be terminated. Failing your job or failing school because you can't keep up because your job should not be the kind of mental stress we are, we are putting on our students, especially in a COVID and hopefully soon post-COVID environment. Students need volunteer leadership or jobs to build their college applications. This is also looked at for scholar, scholarship applications and bright futures. Medically speaking, it is easier for a student missing one day to make up four classes and have the possibility of being on track for the next class versus missing seven and feeling behind in every class. Some illnesses such as sickle cell anemia require frequent absences. Our goal as a community is to provide all children the best educational opportunities. This past year, the state of Florida mandated mental health education for all students in grade six through 12. Lee County has initiated this education. However, adding mental health stress to students with, uh, with a change in schedule, complicating their work and volunteer possibilities and adding to their daily workload is unacceptable. Ironically, I urge each of you to look back on the video teaser posted on the district website for grade 12, accepting your circumstances. The current seniors have had a lot of accepting with our COVID environment and everything that went, it went with it. Loss of prom, missing interaction with friends and teachers, nervously studying grade B exams and more. Has this changed the message you want to state to our incoming seniors too? Thank you. Next is Paige Hinton Frankie Odie. A seven class schedule would be detrimental and irregular for several reasons. For starters, we're used to having block scheduling for even and odd days. For some, they've had this schedule for six years. For me, I've had it for almost four years. It's unfair to change our method so suddenly. Another reason being that students these days, with the weight of our society's problems on our shoulders, are very stressed and oftentimes depressed. School is one of the most infamous reasons for our negative emotions. With that being said, classes such as art or TV production are our ways of having some fun during a hard school day. With this schedule change, we don't get to have that release. Additionally, if we have the same classes every day, assignments and homework may be due sooner than they usually are, which just adds to our, onto our stress. Yet another reason would be the extended days. Although maybe our school days would be extended only slightly, a half hour is a lot of time for someone who has several assignments due. It sets our days back where we might already have a routine and if we're a part of an after school club, that just pushes out our day even more. All in all, this new schedule affects us students in so many ways. I personally fear this might drive us IB kids even crazier than we already are. IB itself is a tough, sometimes unpleasant program and with the introduction of this new schedule, our school lives are going to become all the more unpleasant. Next is a joint submission by Jenna, Becky and Jeff Ward. This letter expresses my family's concern about the block scheduling changes that has been approved uh, by the Lee School, Lee School System Administrative Staff effective April 9th, 2020. When the email was reviewed by my family, the information shared was very disturbing. Our daughter, who is currently an IB student in her junior year at Fort Myers, took the information of the change in scheduling art. The IB students will lose their elective period. The band program will be significantly impacted as IB students are involved with the dance team and band. The Fort Myers dance team would most likely be eliminated. The goal of providing the students more learning time by moving to the new schedule will negatively impact the IB students. The IB students currently take many preparatory tests for the IB exams that take an entire one hour and 30 minutes. The new schedule will cause each test to span multiple days, which will require studying several more days. This is not productive for the IB students or the IB teachers as they could have up to seven, uh, seven challenging exams in one day. The IB level science labs that are a requirement for the IB diploma cannot be completed in 49 minutes. Without having the full one hour and 30 minutes, the results of the lab cannot be obtained. The IB science labs cannot be completed over multiple days because the lab cannot be frozen in time and then resumed the next day. The IB students will have shortened lectures and additional daily homework assignments, which are critical to understanding the IB concepts. The lectures for these classes are college level and cannot be understood in 49 minutes. The ID students must complete two years of rigorous IB coursework and to alter the current class length would jeopardize their ability to, to achieve or pass a score on the final IB test. This change could impact the IB student's ability to obtain full tuition from the Florida Bright Futures Program with their IB diploma. The IB student's ability to obtain college credits could also be in jeopardy. Changing the school schedule to 49 minutes could impact all IB students passing their final IB tests and the school's pass rates, which are currently very high. Our recommendation is that you consider maintaining the current block scheduling for IB students for the 2020 to 2021 Lee County school year. The Lee County Schools administrative decision did not take into account the impact to the IB students. This decision to change to a daily 49 minutes, uh, sorry, to a daily 49 minute seven class periods day for all Lee County IB students will not provide a learning environment that is required for their success. Thank you for, uh, thank you for consideration. Next is Daywill Diaz. Hi, I am a student enrolled in the AICE program at North Fort Myers High School. Being in this program, I have learned that AICE classes aren't like normal classes. These classes require a lot of work and time by not, uh, only the teacher but the students as well. Having these high level classes in the same day, every day, will not ease the stress provoked by these classes, but on the other hand, it will inevitably increase them since we would have to learn more things under a shorter amount of time period. I hope my words can be considered and that they help give a reason to rethink the change that was agreed for the block schedules. Next is John Shannon. I am writing today to show my support for maintaining our current block scheduling in all Lee County high schools. I oppose moving to a seven period class day. I will have both an IB student and a traditional student in high school for the 2020-21 school year. I feel strongly that the current block scheduling is best for both of my children. For all IB, AP, arts, AICE students in all of our schools, the longer classroom period provides added continuity of instruction. It has taken our teachers time to adjust to teaching this way. However, it aligns well with the international IB and AP standards for testing. For all traditional students, block scheduling allows them to focus on four topics of homework and test, uh, studying per night plus allows them time to reach out to study groups or the teacher if they are struggling in a specific area. Many of our current high school students work jobs, perform volunteer work or participate in after school activities. These activities are an important part of their personal development as we prepare them for post-graduation life. Having seven subjects of homework will cause some students to quit some or all of the activities as they will not have adequate time to both focus, uh, for success in school and continue employment slash activities. Failing your job or failing school because you can't keep up should not be the kind of mental stress we are putting on our students, especially in a COVID and soon hopefully a post-COVID environment. Students need volunteer leadership or jobs to build their college applications. Extracurricular activities such as jobs, clubs or volunteer work are looked at favorably when applying for scholarships and bright futures and it is incumbent on us to give the framework to allow them to succeed. A further consequence of this move will be on those children who require frequent absences. For, as an example, some children with medical issues require regular treatment and a periodic absence. It is easier for a student missing one day for a medical reason to make up four classes and remain on track for the next class versus missing seven and falling behind in every class. Our goal as a community is to provide all children the opportunity for success, not marginalize them for items out of their control. This past year, the state of Florida mandated mental health education for all students in grades six through 12. Lee County has initiated this education. However, adding mental health stress to students with a change in schedule, complicating their work and volunteer possibilities and adding to their daily workload is unacceptable. Next is Alexander Rodriguez. Well, it appears that not only does the school district not care about its students, but has decided it needs to exploit a tragedy to do so. Rick May died from this virus. Rick May was a voice actor who voiced many beloved video game characters. I and many other, uh, wept for days when he died and the district has the audacity to use this to hide their unpopular change. As, as a matter of principle, I can't let this stand. Rick did not die for this. Change the schedule back to a block schedule and give us our time back instead of using us, the students as a ploy to get more money for you to mismanage on this district. Give us our elected back, give us our lives back. Give our schedule back so we don't become slaves to this education system, spending every last second, completing homework or trying to catch up because all classes are every day. Don't make me switch from IB to dual enrollment. Don't make this decision that will add too much stress to the point where students start to consider suicide, which will happen with a seven day period. I don't want there to be a day where I have to find out a classmate has committed suicide from the stress at school. If the district continues and let these, uh, lets these children succumb to the stress and suffering with this new switch, um, I hope they have been being pious in other ways because the people in charge of this switch otherwise will rot now. Next up is Jennifer Reed. I commend the school district for its analysis of student achievement. The findings for high schools indeed are alarming. However, I urge the school board to proceed with great caution. This is hardly the first time the district administration has proposed a radical change. Open parenthens, think the start, the school start time debacle, close parenthens, without adequate time for input from stakeholders, parents, teachers, building administrators, support staff and students. To be transparent, I am the parent of a Cypress High freshman and I am distressed by the potential impact to my daughter's schedule and her ability to take the arts and AP classes promised to her. But I will speak from a more universal perspective. I agree wholeheartedly that the district must address waning student achievement. The administration's white paper, however, fails to address a fundamental question. What other variables could be at play? Surely instructional time and scheduling formats, though hugely influential, are not the only, uh, differentiator between Lee and Collier or Lee and Miami-Dade or any of the other comparison districts. Another question unaddressed, is moving to a seven day period the only means of increasing instructional time? Could you not extend the time allotted to each class within the four by four block and yield a similar result? It seems that time is lost, lost being in italics, with each class change. In a school as large as Fort Myers High, students need a, a full high, a full five minutes to get from one end of campus to the next. At Cypress Lakes High School, art students must trek to an entirely different building. Where in the white paper is this allotment calculated? Your own research should prompt another query. To what extent might student achievement increase if the district mandated higher graduation standards? Forty-seven percent of seniors don't take a full course load. I'd ask how many juniors, juniors being in italics, are qualifying for off-campus time too? We want excellent, excellence, do we demand it? I respectfully ask the school board to do the following. Ask critical questions. The administration's paper leaves much unsaid. Table the discussion. We are in the midst of a pandemic. How can the district ask its teachers and principals to overturn instructional methods while simultaneously demanding they learn to deliver, deliver lessons virtually? Allow adequate time for public comment and give stakeholders adequate notice of a proposal of this magnitude. If nothing else, allow principals and their staff to employ their own innovative thinking and grant them flexibility in how they increase instructional time. The Lee County School District has long encouraged the development of specialty programs and individual school identity. Honor that history. If this is truly about student achievement, then let the people who work every day with students determine how best to propel them forward. Next is Jonah DeLeonardo. The change block schedule poses to me and my fellow IB students prevents us from enrolling in electives unless we sacrifice the necessity of taking a core class in school rather than on a computer. I hope our decision will be a good one. However, currently, I feel as though the school district is denying me necessary opportunities in pursuit of learning and school participation. Next is Jacqueline Perez. I don't believe any board member would support the new bell time, especially with the backlash of losing staff in the middle of a recession. If student achievement was a primary concern, you should examine the later start time that has proven to be a contributing factor in student achievement. You should also consider an increase of at least 30 minutes instead of 15. I am sure those who are running for reelection and endorse the original idea will have a new view with this backlash. Children and employees have never been a priority to them. If you have concerns about money, start with cutbacks at the district. We happen to be one of the top six districts with the most non-instructional administrators. Perform cost analysis on then, on vendor contracts. Examine the possibility of our maintenance staff performing some of those jobs. Examine the possibility of our maintenance staff performing some of those jobs instead of paying a vendor three million dollars a year to change filters. Review the budget for Brian Williams Department. It is not clear what Williams does. He hired several attorneys for every area of expertise. Robert Dotick handled all the same issues by himself. Recently, at an employee hearing, he hired an outside attorney, Suzanne Boy. This is wasteful spending. I have reviewed, uh, P R R logs, I believe, which I believe is public request logs. Uh, I'm sorry, public records request logs. It is apparent Williams spends a lot of time with the communication department and disparaging real whistleblowers and denying them a right to discovery. There are two employees from maintenance you are all familiar with. They have never had any complaints lodged against them until they came forward to complain of abuse and corruption in their departments. They have been defamed and attacked and you have allowed it. While other so-called whistleblowers make deals that are paid off, these two men have integrity and honor. They have shown true bravery and courage. Both have requested video evidence that would exonerate them. They have been denied this evidence by Williams, who is abusing his, his position by being deceptive, stating the videos are protected by state statute. Those videos do not meet the criteria he refers to. His Napoleonic attitude and conduct is not reflective of what this district strives to be or should be. It is your duty to ensure a safe environment for students and employees. Next is Camille Vasquez. I am currently a junior at Cape Coral High School in the I B program. I'm writing this in regards to the seven period schedule change. As it has been explained to us, this schedule is supposed to be beneficial for students and teachers as well as, uh, for students to take more academic classes, courses, sorry. This avoids seniors, quote, loading up with junk, end quote, as Mr. Atkins has said. I understand where you, where you may think seeing teachers every day will give the students and teachers a better relationship while also increasing students' learning. But as a student, I can assure you that isn't the solution. Forcing a student to see their teachers, teachers every day won't improve the student-teacher relationship or benefit the classroom. Students and teachers create bonds through light personalities and teaching styles, not forced engagement. Having only less than an hour in class will hinder our learning. Classes will move too fast for students to keep up with. Instructional time will be cut in half and students will struggle to finish assignments. A P or I B classes won't have time for necessary assignments like D B Qs or L A Qs that require sixty minutes to complete. If it's the senior classes you're worried about, uh, or the bottom twenty-five percent, then I believe a different course of action could be taken. It's been said seniors are taking all their academic requirements within their first three years and taking mostly elective senior year. Rather than changing everyone's schedule, would it make sense to change the graduation requirements? It makes the students spread out their educational classes so there's an even balance of elected and academic classes every year. I also believe we should help the bottom twenty-five percent, but not at the cost of your top twenty-five percent. There needs to be a way to help those at the bottom without hurting your top performing students. I B students get one elective. If you take our eighth period away, we're in school for seven periods of straight academic work with no break. Electives allow us to explore ourselves and make school fun. Some students take their electives seriously. If a student wants to be a musician, how will they get into college with no musical background? All because their school didn't allow them an elective. I know there were mentions of practices after school, but you're not considering students that cannot make after-school meetings for personal reasons. That's the whole part of having an elective. I have a friend that wants to pursue a career in performing arts, but if you take away your eighth period, the teacher can no longer hold a class. So there's no long, there will no longer be a dance team at our school. It's not fair to us. Next is Sydney Driscoll. I'm a junior in the I B program at Cape Coral High School, and I'm very concerned with decisions towards the seven period schedule for Lee County High Schools. This option would create extra stress and work for students who will now have to go home and do work for potentially all seven classes. And it will take away I B students one elective. Although I'm not involved in any activity that would require an elective or eighth class, I know from my friends in any of the arts program, programs that this will present a difficult decision. Staying in I B and being prepared for college or pursuing their passions and hobbies. These students shouldn't have to make that decision, especially those moving into their senior year. What I can speak on with a more personal opinion is the alternative options that would allow I B students to keep an elective, an elective at the expense of their theory of knowledge, open perenns, T O K, closed perenns class. Although this is a very valid option for some students, I'm worried about the impact this choice will have on a student's workload going into next year. Because of COVID nineteen, a lot of my class's curriculum and internal assessments, open perenns, I A's, closed perenns, are having to be pushed back and altered. I fear that going back to school in fall is going to be a lot of work for I B juniors, who will be S A T slash A C T testing, completing college applications, doing their I A's and other I B work, and catching up on lost time for classes. With shortened class periods, this will be even more difficult as forty-nine minutes isn't enough to cover everything. And the loss of T O K will make this more stressful as T O K is a valuable class to tackle extra work. I hope this, that feedback from students on this issue will be considered, and I hope that the school board is able to keep their students in mind for this decision. Thank you. Next is Victoria Vernon Stenin. My child has worked very hard through her school years maintaining an A average in all her classes. Joining I B was one of the goals she aimed for and attained. Taking away the electives is a major blow for her as she spent time planning her classes and carefully choosing the ones that will be beneficial. As with most students, it is very disappointing when choices are limited. Especially in a time when sacrifices and changes are already done, uh, happening due to the coronavirus. I fully support the blended block option as outlined in the Riverdale High School I B team, I'm sorry, as outlined by the Riverdale High School I B team. Please consider the benefits and give the kids a break during these tough times. Next was Andrea Jaeger. I have been informed that there is a chance to offer a blended, open perenns block and seven class, closed perenns pilot option for the I B schools. I am writing you because I support this. My son is a current pre-I B freshman at Riverdale High School. Reasons to consider the pilot. I B students need the extra class time to engage in meaningful conversation with their teachers and classmates. I B students need time in between class days to work on assignments. I've seen my kids study and plan like adults. The lessons learned in scheduling their time are lifelong. Block scheduling allows them the flexibility to do that. My son's two electives are banned in film. Those are the two healthy activities that keep him interested and out of trouble. Please don't take away the chance for him to have both. They are healthy outlets for him. My child is a hard worker and a great kid. He enjoys I B and holds himself to a high standard. If we don't give them the class time and tools, how can we support them? Please consider the pilots, please consider the pilot. The kids deserve the chance. Thank you. Next is Angie Salander. I haven't been to a meeting in a while because I felt our concerns upon our deaf ears. Today, I'm standing up for the students and the teachers. The proposed schedule change has caused havoc and stress for students, parents, and now teachers. Timing is less than ideal. Yes, Ms. Patrica, like you said, in your, uh, life, in your life, we can't use COVID as an excuse for everyone. However, there is a thing called compassion, and all of you should have compassion for our students and teachers because without it, we have nothing. Parents have lost jobs, students are trying to get an education from home, many of them without parental guidance, and many of our students are going hungry. What about those who need school to get out of abusive homes? There are many factors that should be considered. I'm against this change, as are many other parents and many, many students. I watched the March meeting and the kids begged you not to do this. You said you would revisit this, but you did not, other than behind closed doors. The sneakiness is unethical and shameful. You dismiss the students sending them a clear message that they don't matter. Why are some schools five by five and others seven periods? Our kids are not a science experience, experiment, nor are they cash cow, nor are they your cash cow. If you bothered to take input from student advisory, maybe someone would have an idea that would work for all. There are other ways to do this. Many people have ideas that could work and, and all would be happy. If, if being in all caps, this is done, it shouldn't be rushed. Take a few years and do it right. Your numbers don't compute either. You, however, did not give anyone the opportunity to bring forth their ideas. How did this happen? Why was it done behind closed doors? Please don't blame the principals either. Ever tell your boss no? Doesn't usually work out too well. Now teachers will lose jobs while we have a teacher shortage. What sense does that make? The message you just sent to students, staff, and parents is loud and clear. When was this decided and who decided? Why wasn't it voted on? Why didn't you give the opportunity for the public to work on you with this? We'll hear our response come election time. Next is Kevin Barbogaleta. I am Kevin Barbogaleta and I attend the I B program at Riverdale High School. In an attempt to help persuade the school board to return to block scheduling, at least for I B and A I C E, a Zoom meeting I tuned into on April twenty-first, twenty twenty, at seven thirty in the morning has prompted me to write this email. Block scheduling is a, is a preference as seven day classes, seven classes a day will make it, uh, so work is due more frequently. And I B students will have issues managing their time. Learning will be hindered as classes will be shorter, shorter, and it'll result in more students staying after for tutoring. This, this increasing school attendance hours and limiting time to accomplish schoolwork, and it would interfere with jobs. The time switching between seven classes could better be utilized for learning as it currently is. Lastly, having the same classes every day would get repetitive and mundane and kids will hate that. Next is Ava Piper. This change is serious to I B students, especially at Riverdale High School. We care a lot about the education of I B students, and changing to a seven period days, uh, seven period day school schedule will not be a good change for us. We need a lot of time with our teachers to get in deep discussions and fully complete assignments every day. With the new schedule change, we would not be able to spend as much time with our teachers and would suffer academically. Keeping a block schedule would be the best decision for the higher educated students. Next is Lisa Alse. I am writing this email in regards to the possible schedule change for high schools in Lee County. Speaking as a mom of an I B student, this decision would be detrimental for those who are the most diligent in your school district. My daughter is a senior at Riverdale. I can remember her being excited to be in such a prestigious program in honor she worked so hard for. As the years went on, there were tears of not being able to finish an assignment due to time, hours upon hours of studying, loss of a social life. She had to quit marching band to achieve her dream, her dream, to graduate with this diploma. Now I have, I now have a seventh grader who has the same ambition. I am apprehensive to allow her to do so. Changing, changing the schedule of these kids would make it nearly impossible for her to have ample time in each, ample time in each class to get the information she, open perenns, and others, closed perenns, would need to complete this degree. My younger daughter has anxiety. This decision would make this program nearly impossible for students who are the hardest working in your district. A typical I B student is permitted I B electives, which isn't the most desirable of options. Changing to block scheduling, uh, would not allow these students to be able to have any electives. We are teaching our children that they are being, quote, punished, end quote, for being in this program. I ask you to consider the students who work the hardest, dedicate the most to your school district, the ones who bring the most to the table. Thank you. Next is, uh, Carolina, um, Boitel. My name is Carolina Boitel and I'm a junior attending Riverdale High School in the I B program. For the past three years, I have worked extremely hard during school, after school, and at home in order to maintain a balanced schedule and dedicate myself to becoming the best student I am able to be. We are currently mandated to take seven I B courses with our current eight block scheduling that allows I B students to take an additional course as an elective. For most I B students, I know, electives are the only time in school students are able to unwind. We are assigned hours of homework not only through the week, but also throughout the weekend, and more times than often overwhelm students. Electives we take in school allocate us to reserve a time to focus on ourselves and have a mental hiatus from standard classes, allowing us to refresh our focus for our remaining classes. As a student, I'm not able to dedicate seven consecutive hours to taking college-level courses and I B regulated classes. An additional class to our mandatory seven courses for I B is essential in allowing students such as myself to take an elective that allows them to redirect their focus and take that mental break needed to relieve any stress or anxiety being built up throughout the day. A few months ago, mental health class was made mandatory by the state. Electives that cater to our interests contribute to that mental health many see as important. Not to mention, condensing our class time to fifth forty-nine minutes won't allow teachers enough time to go through their lesson and spend time assisting individual students or helping direct the class toward succeeding in their assignments. Teachers will be forced to dedicate the shortened time period to strictly teaching their lesson rather than having the extra time for the lesson to focus on the students' needs. Having elongated class periods allow teachers the ability to take their time getting through their lesson, teach lessons that may take longer to go over. More student-teacher contact, contract time is guaranteed for I B students through our current block scheduling. The bottom line is a seven period schedule is not convenient for every student, I B students especially. A blended schedule allows a seven period scheduling to be available to the general education without interfering with I B students' needs. Um, before I continue, I just want to make sure, because I know it's four o'clock, are we okay to stay on or do we need to switch over?
No, sir, we'll stay on unless it kicks us off.
Okay, perfect. Next up is Don Kennedy, um, whose submission was four hundred and sixty-six words, so I will, uh, read to four hundred and fifty. This letter is in response to the high school schedule change sent out on behalf of Dr. Atkins on Thursday, April ninth. We, the Lee County voting public, feel that Dr. Atkins' decision to eliminate the current high school block schedule for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and to communicate this change during a global pandemic lacks empathy, integrity, and professionalism and violates compliance with the sunshine law. We understand that Governor DeSantis declared a state of emergency with regards to the COVID nineteen pandemic. But we feel the schedule change discussion does not, not being in all caps, meet the definition of, quote, emergency, end quote, defined in policy one point one eight. The district website states that both the superintendent and the school board, quote, "values the ideas of members in the community," end quote. This statement appears to be a fallacy given the timeline regarding this decision. Informal information was shared with some students and parents in mid-February. The February twenty-fifth Board Action Meeting had thirteen public comments with three speakers addressing the scheduling topic. At the following March tenth Board Action Meeting, twenty-three public comments were made with twelve of these speakers addressing scheduling. The March twenty-fourth Board Action Meeting did not allow for public comment due to COVID nineteen precautions and a lack of technical expertise in broadcasting the information to the public in a comprehensible manner. In fact, a motion was made by Dr. Atkins based on direction from his legal counsel to suspend the meeting per compliance with the sunshine law. In just a few short weeks, both students and parents advocated against this change with little to no direction, guidance or information provided by the district until the April ninth decision. A handwritten petition, open perenns, approximately four hundred signatures, closed perenns, and an online perenns, or online petition, open perenns, currently over twenty-one hundred signatures with a website that will be available on the public records, but which was also, uh, read at the floor, closed perenns. Um, was started along with the media movement by students to have their voices heard by our district that claims to, uh, to value the ideas of the community. As voting members of Lee County, we feel that Dr. Atkins misused his power to make non-emergency decision. Sorry, make a non-emergency decision. Emergency items are those required as essential functions of the school. Our only recourse against the misuse of power by Dr. Atkins is through our elected school board members, and we are requesting the board's support during this election year. The district's vision to be a world-class school system will not be attainable if the district cannot follow its own guidelines uh, regarding what constitutes a, quote, emergency, end quote, and the right of the public to provide input. We, the voting public, are requesting that the schedule change be put on hold until the public can have the chance to properly weigh in on a decision of this magnitude and the district can provide us with tangible data, and that's four hundred and fifty words. Next is Kayla Chow. The seven period bell schedule may be beneficial for the rest of the school, but it is not in favor of the I B students. The I B diploma program is an important and valuable program for the school and an amazing opportunity for students to have. Changing to the seven period schedule will not allow students to fully immerse themselves in the program as our class times are cut in half, losing time needed for us to engage and discuss complex topics as we would have with the block scheduling. Gaps in our learning spread out between days would not be beneficial to our learning because we'd have underdeveloped thoughts and unanswered questions. Switching to seven periods would also mean that I B students would not get an elective. Electives are important to us as well because these give us the opportunity to tranquilize between stressful classes and regain our focus. Having seven periods in one day will also mean that we will not be able to fully engage in seven subjects a day, meaning increased workload and a decreased amount of time. Considering passing periods as well, we will only receive an extra fifteen minutes of class time. This would defeat the purpose, purpose of extending the school day because it only adds an extra minute per class, and this does not even include the lunch periods. If not a full schedule change, then even a compromise with a blended schedule would be beneficial. Statistics have shown that a blended schedule is actually more beneficial, uh, for students, even with a sixty-seven percent compared to sixty-eight percent contact time with a seven period schedule. Next is Nathan Horvath. Commenting as an I B student about the proposal for a seven period scheduling system and the effect of the scheduling on the I B curriculum and schedule. This would affect all I B students in a negative manner and therefore would suggest a more blended schedule. The seven period schedule takes away a needed elective for all I B students. The seven period schedule takes away a needed elective for all IB students. Enforces less class time for each class, which is also needed for the IB students. All of us strongly encouraged uh to reconsider this uh would affect reconsider how this would affect us and how most IB students feel overlooked. Uh feel looked over and not taken into consideration with this decision at all. And rather than it is just assumed we will adapt, which is overwhelm, which is overwhelming uh and which is overwhelming unjust. Thus, the blended schedule seems to be a compromise for both parties and we would strongly recommend the board to consider this. Uh next is um Suzanne Sim and this is the second to last of the uh the sixty submissions. Hers is uh four hundred and sixty-nine words, so I will again read the first four hundred and fifty. This letter is in response to the high school schedule change sent out on behalf of Dr. Atkins on Thursday, April ninth. We, the Lee County voting public, feel that Dr. Atkins' decision to eliminate the current high school block schedule for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And to communicate this change during a global pandemic lacks empathy, integrity and professionalism. And violates compliance with the sunshine law. We understand that Governor DeSantis declared a state of emergency with regards to the COVID nineteen pandemic. But we feel that the schedule change discussion does not, not being in all caps, meet the definition of quote emergency end quote defined in policy one point one eight. The district website states that both the superintendent and the school board quote values the ideas of members in the community end quote. This statement appears to be a fallacy given the time timeline regarding this decision. Informal information was shared with some students and parents in mid-February. The February twenty-fifth uh board action meeting had thirteen public comments with three speakers addressing the scheduling topic. At the following March tenth board action meeting, twenty-three public comments were made with twelve of these speakers addressing scheduling. The March twenty-fourth board action meeting did not allow for public comment due to COVID nineteen precautions. And a lack of technical expertise in broadcasting the information to the public in a comprehensible manner. In fact, a motion was made by Dr. Atkins based on direction from his legal counsel to suspend this meeting per compliance with the sunshine law. In just a few short weeks, both students and parents advocated against this change. With little to no direction, guidance or information provided by the district until the April ninth decision. A handwritten petition, open perens, approximately four hundred signatures, closed perens. And online per uh petition, open perens, currently over twenty-one hundred signatures. Also has a uh website link which was addressed before and will be available on the public records uh is cited, closed perens. Was started along with a media movement by students to have their voices heard by our district that claims to value the ideas of the community. As voting members of Lee County, we feel that Dr. Atkins misused his power to make a non-emergency decision. Emergency items are those required as essential functions of the school. Our only recourse against the misuse of power by Dr. Atkins is through our elected school board members and we are requesting the board's support during this election year. The district's division, division to be a world-class school system will not be attainable if the district cannot follow its own guidelines regarding what constitutes and quote emergency end quote. And the right of the public to provide input. We, the voting public, are requesting that the schedule change be put on hold until the public can have the chance to properly weigh in on a decision of this magnitude. And the district can provide us with tangible data and that's the end of four hundred and fifty words. Um our last of the sixty submissions is by Lori Fahey. Please review the Lee County School District's uh open perens, LCSD, closed perens. Public school organizational chart. I emphasize that these are public schools owned, paid for by our taxes and directed by the public. At the top of this organizational chart is the public, followed by the public elected members of the LCSD Board of Education. Open perens, BOE, closed perens. And then the superintendent, an employee of the LCSD BOE. During the greatest global pandemic pandemic our world has ever seen, the Florida LCSD superintendent took the opportunity. Without the input or knowledge of the public, the school board, the school advisory committees. Or our teachers or collective bargaining to single-handedly decide and announce to our children and teachers. That all school proms and all twenty twenty school graduations were canceled. A week later, he informed, informed being in all caps. Us that all high school schedules for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year had been changed. All of these changes were decided and announced without our knowledge or consent. While our teachers were becoming proficient at teaching children long distance. And parents were preparing for a quarantine at home for an indefinite time, often with no income. While we worked to help our children find comfort in this uncertain time. During all of this, we received emails from the district telling our children that quote prom has been canceled end quote. Quote, all twenty twenty graduation ceremonies have been canceled end quote. And now quote, all high school schedules have been changed to a seven day period end quote. Which means that you have no electives for the twenty twenty, twenty-one year. Your elective teachers have been fired, your core instruction teachers have no planning periods. And if you're an AP slash IB student, sorry. And that's the end of the sixty public comments that uh that uh came in and just so the public is aware, I read them in the order and they were taken in the order that they were received.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Um you did a stellar job of that. That was a long, a long way of ending your career with us. And this is your last board meeting, but we're not finished yet. So if everybody will take a deep breath, we'll move on with the agenda. At this time. Okay. We have um next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days. We start over again, seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all material and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent. With any questions we may have regarding recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of approving on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items on the action, on the action agenda that you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished, finished business? Tabled portion of the agenda. Um Ms. J. Vannelli.
I have none. I have none.
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan. Ms. Jordan, please unmute.
I apologize. Uh I had a question on F one.
F one, okay. Ms. Gittens.
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn.
I have none.
Mrs. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of F one? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Vaughn and seconded by. Ms. Gittens. Okay, please record your vote. Okay.
I'm so sure. Do you want me to vote for you?
Uh no, I got it, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries seven zero. We have one poll to address. Dr. Atkins, could you please read your recommendation for the pulled item F one?
County Commissioners Contract uh for the purchase of four automobiles, sport utility vehicles, passenger and light duty vans, light and. And medium duty trucks, cabs and chassis awarded to Sam Galloway Ford for the period of December tenth, twenty sixteen through December ninth, twenty twenty. At an estimated expenditure of sixty-eight thousand five hundred forty-four dollars with the option to cancel if deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Uh approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion for the pulled item?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. J. Vannelli. Sure. And any discussion, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, I just said um just wanted some clarification. I did get a respond on my question about the need of the vans. My other question that I had and I did send it in earlier, but I had not received a respond was. Do all the other high schools have the vans as well? That was my only other question. Or is it just for Benita?
I believe other, other high schools do have access to vans, but let me uh defer that to, I know Mr. Simmons is in the room. So he could probably respond for you.
Thank you.
Or Dr. Spiro.
I am not Mr. Simmons, but good afternoon, everybody. Good to see everybody. Um yes, high schools have driver's education vehicles um that sign to each school and some of those are vans as well and some are cars.
Okay, so my question was because of the fact that you're, they're asking for two vans for, to um show children, students around to different locations and I get all of that. I just want to make sure that the other schools have that same luxury uh that one school would have. If the kids go to be transported to another location without renting, um that they have that available to them. That's all I want to know.
So for this particular purchase, uh this, these were funded from two different sources. One was from a community, I believe Benita Bay helped pay for one of the vans. And the other one was from a booster club. Not every school um does have the opportunity for community members to help purchase those vehicles. Um so that would be unfair for me to say that every school has that opportunity because they all don't.
Okay, so they were purchased through uh other organizations, but it's coming out of our budget? The money goes in and then it comes out?
Um yeah, um and I, I'd have to ask Dr. Decimore about how that works with the mon, with the money and I could talk about that as well. Um as far as the funding, hold on one second.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. J. Vannelli and Ms. Gittens, please hold on for a second.
Hello. Okay, so the, the question was about the funding source for the vans?
Uh that. Right, because it looks like, it looks like we're approving money, uh X amount of money, dollars. But then he just said that uh that money was given from different organizations.
Right, right. The money came from a donated funding source, so the money is there. What the approval is asking for uh is the. To purchase those particular vans because it goes over the dollar amount that would need to come to the board for approval. So the funding source is there to be used for that purpose if we're, you know, school approves that, you know, this particular expenditure over um the fifty.
So you're approving the expenditure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, uh Dr. Decimore, hold on for a second. Um Ms. J. Vannelli, did you have something? Ms. J. Vannelli, unmute. Thank you.
I don't, well, my question actually isn't to Dr. Decimore, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
So it was something that um actually uh Dr. Spiro just said. He said access to it, so I'm under the, now I'm understanding that not every school has two vans um. To use at, to, to bust students around to sports or whatever, so this, so sounding like to me, this is not something that's. Every school has and therefore I question, i- is it equitable? Um so can somebody clarify?
Yeah, here, here's Dr. Spiro to clarify.
Um as I said, as I was saying earlier, sorry about that, as saying earlier, no, not every school has the opportunity to have community agencies to provide these type of donations. Um and so is it equitable for every school based on this particular scenario? No.
But Dr. Spiro, don't most high schools have vans or cars?
They, they do. They have driver's education vans, driver's education cars as well. They have, they have, all high schools have those vehicles. These are additional vehicles.
So then those were not paid for necessarily by community donors, except in this case at Benita.
Correct. The driver's education vans are, come out of the Schlossberg fund.
Right, okay. Thank you. Ms. J. Vannelli, are you finished? Okay, please unmute.
So can, can we get an, a to, like, how many each, what schools have what and get a um, so I can have an idea. Is there any, do you know that answer? I probably don't know it off the top of your head. I'm just curious, who has, you know, who has a driver's ed van and a car and, and who does it? Is, I guess really what I need to know.
And if the superintendent would like and the board would like, we certainly like, uh would be happy to gather that list for you and provide that to the board.
Okay, um board members, do we all want to know which high schools have which vehicles? One sec, Ms. Gittens and then Mrs. Jordan. Uh will you uh give me an affirmative if we want Dr. Spiro to gather that information for us? Okay. All right, okay. Um. Okay. Uh one negative four, five, yes, and one can live with it. So yes, please, Dr. Spiro, if you could get us that information. I think that would be um appreciated. Thank you.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. J. Vannelli, do you have anything else? I can't hear you.
No, I'm, I'm ready to hear what Glenn has to say, actually.
Okay, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, um I'm muting. Okay, here's what I'm confused. In the uh statements and everything in the consent item. It has a, has a fiscal impact, which to me, I'm understanding that that's an impact to us. Um the dollar for that it was budgeted. And then the next one, it says budget source, it says sixty-eight five forty-four. Um and the account item and all of that. It does not say, uh Dr. Spiro just mentioned that this two vans. And so one of them was paid for by a community source. Um and it, this, that's not reflected in this because, you know, I, I think to the. Us like we're paying sixty-eight five forty-four. If it's going to be um stated this way, then maybe there should. It says budgeted and other source that reduces that sixty-eight five forty-four. Um so it's getting when we get our budget reports and there are donations and other rewards to the district that becomes part of the budget. And then as Dr. Decimore just said, then whether it came from donations or, or grants or Schlossberg, it's. It's already in the budget. The reason it came to us is because it was more than fifty thousand dollars to be expended from the budget.
Does that make sense to you?
No, I feel not clear on that. I'm, I'm agreeing. To me, it's coming out of our budget, sixty-eight thousand five forty-four. With a credit for the one that we are not paying.
That.
Okay, so, but I understand what you're saying. Get that report, we'll see it. The issue I have with that is it's after the fact. In other words, you, we do it, we vote on it. And then we get a report a couple of months later saying, this is what we did. I would prefer to see that filters out in the very beginning. That's all I'm asking.
And I'm sure Decimore, uh Dr. Decimore can clarify that better than I can. Okay, so now, Ms. Jordan, you had your hand up?
Uh yes, thank you. Uh I was just, I did not realize that that was um. Money that was given from a different organization, so there would be a budget line for that uh showing that. They are paying for that because when I read that, it was as if we were approving that money to come out of our budget as a whole. For that particular school. So I get it now that that has been explained and I thank you. for that particular school. So I get it now that that has been explained and I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then Ms. Vaughn. Here comes Dr. Decimore. Um, okay, I, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that Ms. Jordan brought it up because frankly, I hadn't thought about that and I think about equity issues a lot. Um. So it's the line in the budget that actually states who gave the money, who donated the money?
Dr. Deci- Well, yes, not, the line in the budget doesn't necessarily state who gave the money, but just the fact that it was given. So in the um account line structure, you see in the um, the budget first on the document, it said account line structure. That number fifty-one, twenty in that account string, that's a project number and that project is donated funds.
Okay.
The account structure itself, based on the project number, is says that that is donated funds, which comes from elsewhere besides our taxpayer dollars. Uh, but what we could do in the future is make sure that we denote that um in, in words as opposed to the number accounting structure. Um, because if you don't, if, if you're not necessarily familiar with all of them, you wouldn't necessarily be able to see that just by looking at the accounting structure. So we can make that a little bit more clear in the future, but that fifty-one, twenty is what tells you that it is a donated source of funds.
Okay, yeah, and, and thank you. That would be really very helpful. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, and then Ms. Gittens?
Okay, and, yes, you heard before, that would be helpful. And especially since Dr. Spiro said that one was being paid for by those funds. So technically, half of the sixty-eight thousand is still coming out of our funding. Is that correct? Um, Decimore, you heard. Welcome back.
No, um, clarification, they were, both vans were to be paid through that donated fund source. So the, the, the one account line that you see on there is the account line that was to be used for the purchase.
Yes, so just to clarify, remember, one was a booster club and then the other was Benita Bay. So it's two different uh organizations outside the district that were donating funds.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins and Dr. Decimore. Any other discussion, board members? Ms. Jordan? No, okay. Well, right. Okay, so we had um a motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Gittens, discussion at this time. Please record your vote.
We'll need a verbal vote on this, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, all right, fine, then. Um, Ms. Giovinelli? Ms. Giovinelli, unmute?
Um, boy, I'm, I'm having a little bit, a hard time with this one a little bit, uh, because of the equitable, equitable issue. Um.
Can, may I, may I just make a comment? Okay, so at different schools, different booster clubs raise different amounts of money. Different parents donate and different community members donate to different schools. I mean, this is, this is historical as far as I can remember, and I don't know if Dr. Atkins would add anything to that. But sometimes um it is not equitable. But most schools do have cars and/or vans, high schools.
My, and what I would say is that I, I totally understand the equitable issue as it relates to, you know, transportation in particular. And I think that, you know, one of the things that we try to do is work with our transportation department to balance that. So if one school has, um, you know, these types of resources, you know, we, we can work through transportation to provide that. Like, you know, if you look at Eastlake County High, that's very difficult sometimes to get transportation out there. And, and we have to go above and beyond what we might have to do at another school um to, to be able to make a, a, really a level playing field as it relates to transportation. So uh I, I do totally get it. Uh, you do see this in other areas as well, uh where they, they raise considerable dollars. Uh, one of the things about Benita Springs uh high school is it, it does have a, a really strong business partner with Benita Bay that has raised considerable um, you know, funds. Um, you know, there are other high schools that have this opportunity as well, particularly those that have alumni. Like Riverdale has a very, very strong alumni uh program, so they're able to, remember, they raised funds for an entire building that they built the rest of. Um, you know, Fort Myers High has raised quite a bit of money. So what we have to do is a district, it, it sounds like my house, actually.
Don't mind him, he's sound asleep.
Um, yeah, that's what it sounded like at our house actually late last night, unfortunately. So, um, but anyway, the, um, we have to work as a district sometimes to try to balance those types of things to, to make sure that we do have a level playing field, so all students have that opportunity.
Thank you. Let's take a, a verbal vote. Ms. Giovinelli? I can't hear you, Ms. Giovinelli. Please unmute.
Uh, that I did. Um, I, I'm gonna say yes, but I did, I would, it would, I still would appreciate, you know, the information I need to see. Um, who has, what schools have, what kind of vehicles, even if it's cars and all that, so, you know.
Dr. Spiro will be present.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Patrica?
Approve.
Ms. Jordan? Affirm? Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I approve it with the caveat that we adjust the way that it's presented to reflect the uh wonderful community support that certain schools receive.
I think that, and I think, yes, and I think that was indicated she would do that. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Um, affirmative.
Mrs. Morgan?
Yes.
And I say yes. Um, Mrs. Johnson, uh, it passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, um, if Mr. Quick has his voice back, we're going to move on to attorney's recommendations.
You guys haven't heard enough of me yet?
Not yet. We just need a little bit more.
This one is, um, recommended action is for the approval of the resolution and Juul litigation retainer agreement uh to engage Wagstaff and Cartmel LLP and the mayor law firm in legal representation of the board to prosecute a claim or potentially claims against the manufacturer of certain vaping products known as Juul. Um, there's no cost to the district unless there's a monetary recovery is obtained by the council in favor of the board. At that point, it is a twenty-five percent uh contingency.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, you've heard the attorney's recommendation uh that we approve the resolution and Juul litigation retainer agreement. Is there a motion to approve? Mrs. Morgan? And second, by Ms. Ju- Any discussion? Uh, I just have one thing. Coincidentally, I was reading the Reader's Digest, uh, and there was a national interest story uh entitled Juul, J-U-U-L, Juul Hooks a New Generation. And it, it was uh from, adapted from a story in the New York Times, and it says, "Warning. In a blink, millions of young people started smoking a trendy e-cigarette and became addicted to a powerful drug. It's time for the damage to be undone." So I'm glad that we are entering this lawsuit because I think we do need to take a stand. And I heard a report the other day that people who are vaping and juuling and smoking are more at risk with the COVID virus than other people. So I'm, I'm happy to see that we're proceeding with this. Any other comments? Okay, then, please record your vote. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quick. Now, moving right along to other business, um, board members' comments and reports. Mrs. Giovinelli?
First of all, I'd like to say, um, that, Mr. Quick, you've been, uh, really wonderful to work with and we will miss you. Um, you have been an asset since, for the moment, you've stepped on board with us, and I really appreciate all your efforts. Your late night emails and responses, you've been very, you were prompt. Um, I hope that, uh, we get to see you again. So, um, and I really do hate, I'm gonna miss you. So I just want you to know that genuinely. Um, I do want to talk about some things and today with all the, um, let, the emails and letters, I am very concerned that, um, the board is being blamed for a decision that we had no real say in. And I, I, that, I can't stress that, um, anymore than the fact that, uh, to the community that we weren't involved in this decision. This was totally superintendent and staff. Um, I'm hoping that the superintendent will take some recognition of that and acknowledge that because I think it's really important to, for the community to understand. Um, I'm concerned that your, um, cabinet that's closest to you didn't advise you a little better in making this decision during the, the pandemic. That, um, causes me alarm for the leadership and judgment. Um, and it, uh, because I, we wouldn't be here today and had a, a five hour, I don't even know how long it's been. Like, it's all the hundred and fifty-six emails about this issue. Um, and I've been expressing that we can't do this to the community for over two weeks now. So I, I think as a board, we need to look at making decisions and the, and as a team, and I don't believe that that, that was done with this decision during this time in the pandemic. And it, it causes me great alarm, um, that, and, and I don't want the community to lose faith in our judgment as a team. And I believe that this decision on the heel of a pandemic was not a good decision, and we have to take ownership of it and acknowledge it and, and try to move on and make sure that, that when the changes are, the schedule changes are made, that is in the best interest of everyone. And so I'm not sure that the present proposal is, is, is that. So I really want this, I really want the, the staff to really look at everything that involves student achievement and the data and the information and the time change, the belt. So there's a lot to undertake this, and I, I, I just really am concerned over the faith of the community. And I don't want to be blamed for a decision that we didn't make. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Giovinelli. Mrs. Patrica?
I'm actually having a, a hard time finding my notes, Madam Chair. May I, can you move on and then come back to me?
I would be happy to do.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Jordan, are you ready?
Yes, sure, I am. Okay. Well, I, just want to say, uh, I appreciate all the, uh, comments that were sent in from the students and the families, uh, and the community as a whole. Um, it's really great that you were engaged and we hope that you continue to be engaged through this whole process. We need your input. Um, John, Mr. Quick, I definitely will miss you as well, and I thank you for everything that, um, you have done for us and being there. I also would like to, um, congratulate Ms. Patrica for being nominated as president-elect to the FSBA. I kudos to you and, you know, that represents us. And then, last but not least, the, the food service workers, I cannot tell you what a great job they do. I still go out there and I see them, I visit the schools. And I, and I thank them for, for being out there, and they are so appreciative to see somebody just come by to thank them. And also, I noticed, uh, as well, is that the packages are there. So when the kids are actually getting their lunch, if they need their paper package, um, they're, they're at the schools as well. And it is good that, um, they can also get food and, uh, classwork as well. And the online, uh, classes are still doing really well, and, um, I just thank everybody for working so hard. That's my comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan. Um, Mrs. Gittens?
Okay, so, for Mr. Quick, I have an award for you. It's the teacher in me, I can't help it. So, quick, is being awarded on behalf of the school board, the Reader's Award. And I will make sure that we send it to you so you can do it. And thank you.
Mrs. Gittens, Mrs. Gittens, for some reason, you're kind of breaking up and your voice is not steady. Um, are you close enough to your microphone?
Okay, I'll move closer. Is that better?
That's a little better, yes, thank you.
Okay, that's probably because I had the award in front of my face.
Okay.
So first off, um, census, we are nationally at fifty percent. Florida's at forty-eight point nine, Lee County's at, we are really working hard, um.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, Ms. Gittens, Ms. Gittens, I'm sorry. Uh, we can't understand what you're saying. It, it's not.
Okay, tell me if I am.
Maybe if you can stay still. I, I'm not sure if that will do it.
Okay.
I believe the network connection is, uh, fairly poor. It may be better to call in on the phone.
Okay. Would you want, you want to send me the number or?
Mr.?
I stand still?
The number and we'll move on right now back. Uh, Ms. Patrica, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, I'm glad to see that we're moving ahead with virtual advisory committee meetings in May. Um, communications continues to push out compelling productions. I remain very, very grateful for their hard work. Foundation for Lee County Public Schools and the televised Golden Apple Celebration on Sunday, um, was absolutely fantastic. Thank you to NBC Two for giving our teachers that airtime. Um, they really do deserve that and so much more. Um, almost every teacher that received that award made a point that, um, it was not, it was not her award, um, his or her award. But it was actually the students' award and that it was also to be shared with the, um, amazing teachers that we have across the district. And, um, I just, I, I thought it was a great, great event and I'm grateful to them for doing that. Um, I have significant concerns about next year's budget and, um, today's discussion and decision deepens those concerns. We don't know what the state is gonna do and we're looking at, um, you know, potential surpluses for, um, not having to transport students. But, but what if the, um, state decides to decrease our per pupil funding based on estimates of what those, um, surpluses are across the state? Um, I, I think, I think we've dug a hole for ourselves today and I'm very, very concerned about, um, our students as a result of that hole. Um, I want to thank Susan Johnson. Um, Susan, you have been incredibly flexible with the implementation of virtual meetings. And you've done a great job, as you always do, of keeping us on track, but this is a new format. And you've still been the expert and you've still kept us on track. So thank you very much for that. Um, I want to thank your attorney, Quick. You made a very difficult situation, um, much easier today. I don't know how you read all of those comments. Um, I really appreciate that. Thank you. And finally, Dr. Atkins, during your comments, could you please provide a brief update regarding graduations? Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Okay, moving on to Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I would like to start with a couple thank yous. Um, one more thank you to Mr. John Quick for being such a great board attorney and, um, I'm just really echo what everybody else said. We, we will miss you. Um, I want, I want to thank the teachers of Lee County, the English teachers of Lee County High Schools for doing such a wonderful job in teaching their students the art of the persuasive essay. I was very impressed with, uh, many of, of the essays that came in, and I think it's great that, um, our students are also taking this kind of proactive approach. That said, regarding the public comment today, um, I'm gonna go back to something, actually, I think Ms. Patrica said something about. said something about the different, different students and different levels of students. We have all kinds of students in Lee County schools, and we care just as much for the student who's reading on a first-grade level because he or she has just come to the United States at age 14 as we do about all of our wonderful advanced-level students and everybody in between. And as somebody who spent 38 years in the classroom, high school classroom, I just want to remind people that although, and it was mostly IB students, but we had some other, we had some A students and their parents, and also some AP students and their parents speaking up. The block schedule and actually any schedule, because I've taught all levels of students from fairly low reading, high school students in reading, through ACE and AP seniors. A good teacher, and we have great teachers in the district, knows how to deliver instruction. And those great teachers will make the necessary changes in their pacing in order to deliver content and skills and all the rest. So let's not forget that. And let's also not forget that there are a lot of benefits of the block schedule to our average-level students and our students who are going to go directly from high school into, into some careers. It allows plenty of time for our students to take OJAT, the on-the-job training, for two years. Some of our students, I'm an advocate for, for a young lady who has difficulty in math, she's a freshman, and she has a double period, a blocked, not double, but every day. She has, she has math, an intensive math one day and the algebra, but the two blend together. We have our students in the academies, and I think the block schedule lends itself well there. It'll help our ELL students because it gives that extra time for enrichment classes and all of that, and on and on. So I just don't want us to forget that we are, we appreciate everybody. And I just didn't want it to pass that it seemed like we were only paying attention to upper-tier advanced students and their parents, not the case at all. And there were a lot of other issues that we, as a school board and the administration, were, were looking at. All right. I have a request for the board, just, and I had sent this to you the end of last week. March 3rd, I made a public records request for an electronic copy of an investigative report, and this was on an individual who was a long time, or not a long time, but a key employee at Fort Myers Technical College. It took, and I realize we had spring break, but it took over six weeks to get any kind of reply on this. And when I did get the reply, over six weeks later, I was told that the Director of Professional Standards said that it would take two hours to compile the records that I was asking for. Somebody else had asked for these records, and there was an option that I could share cost with that person. Actually, the identical record that I've been looking for, Ms. Giavanelle actually wrote to the board yesterday or today that she was requesting this same one. Bottom line, first of all, I question why it would take two hours of staff time to compile an investigative report. The report, or it exists, I'm assuming that we're saying it would take two hours to do necessary redactions. So I question that. But my request to the board for our board protocols, of course, if something takes more than an hour and a half, that we have the option, of course, I could pay $60, or actually 66, or I could request that the board for this particular investigative report file, that you waive the, the time requirement that if it takes over an hour and a half. So do I, do I need to put that in a motion? I went through the protocols, and it looked like a request. Not sure how that goes. It also looked like it was supposed to be done in a workshop, but we haven't had any workshops lately. The latest one got canceled, so. Mr. Quick, can you weigh in on that? Or Ms. Fisher, do I, in a motion, or how do I ask? Ask the board to waive that requirement on this particular file?
Yeah, I mean, you could ask for, it looked like Ms. Giavanelle wanted to say something. I'll wait for her, and then I can chime in.
Mrs. Giavanelle, do you have something to add to this?
Well, actually, I don't understand how come we get some investigations voluntarily out of the blue and then some we have to pay for. So I don't understand that discrepancy. And I have, I actually, in my evaluation, I've talked, I mentioned about public records. I asked for a public records that took almost three months, two and a half months to get a one-page email. It was, and I waited patiently, and I finally had to go to Dr. Atkins to receive it, and then I got it. So I think we have an issue with public records. When I receive public records from other governmental agencies, I get it within 24 hours to one, one, they apologize for sending it to me a week later. So I think we have to, there's an issue with public records requests. Because if, if the board is experiencing this, I'm concerned what the public is experiencing. So I actually had spoken to Dr. Atkins about this a while back, and he had mentioned having a workshop. Actually, it was in an email, he mentioned having a workshop. So it's something that I think we really, really need to do better.
So at this time, I'm making a note.
Could I clarify something, Ms. Fisher?
Please.
Yes, please. Actually, Ms. Giavanelle has anticipated what I was going to say right after this, at this point. And I didn't want to mention in this forum the name of the individual, but I can tell you that it is the same individual. As a matter of fact, you asked for two, I just asked for one. One of them is the same individual you were asking for, and it was, that was in an email. And then, once yea or nay from the board on my getting this, then my second thing was to make a formal request to have, to have this put on a workshop or briefing agenda. And when I sent, last week, when I sent the email to the board, I also included that, that, about this, my request. And then, then I was also going to request formally that we put a briefing on the agenda or workshop and talk about why it's taking so long and then what we can do to solve the problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. I'm making a note of that, and, and I have some comments that I will reserve for the workshop. But I think that we do need to workshop public records requests and investigative reports. And I also think that as members of the governance team, we should be privy to those reports and information equitably at all times. And I mean, I've received investigative reports and recommendations that were public records without even soliciting them at times. So I think that, that is something that we need to discuss and workshop. I don't know if it warrants a briefing. Maybe, Mr. Quick, you can tell me this, because I don't know if it's something we're actually going to vote on. So, Dr. Atkins?
Just wanted to clarify a couple things. You know, in terms of when it's a time limit, yes, that's predominantly a redaction issue in the case of an investigation. The, the thing is about board members receiving investigations or not, if something is less than 90 minutes, then it's my understanding that they would receive it. If something goes more than 90 minutes, that's where you get into this issue right now. And I, I do, I really, as I said before, I really do believe this is an issue that we can workshop. We did this, actually, with the previous board, and I think it helped to, to clarify some of the questions. But this particular group, you know, you haven't had an opportunity to really do an in-depth workshop on this issue, so we would be happy to do that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'll follow up with you about that. Ms. Giavanelle?
Well, and the problem with that is it's been inconsistent. It's not consistent with receiving, sometimes receiving them and then not receiving them, even when you don't ask for them. So I think that that's part of the issue is that, you know, it's not consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will put that on for a workshop in the very near future. I'll get with Dr. Atkins and his staff and Susan, and we'll fit it in as soon as there's space. And we will be having a workshop on Monday, May 4th. Just looking at my calendar. So I don't know if it'll, what we have on that, but we'll check that. Okay, so then we are, Ms. Vaughn, have you finished your report? Or do you still have some more to say?
No, I'm just waiting for the, the vote or consensus or whatever needs to happen to see if we'll waive that. If not, I guess Ms. Giavanelle and I can split the costs.
If you're going to do it, I would recommend it as a consensus, and maybe it would be a consensus that the board is requesting the superintendent to provide these records to the, to the board members in response to prior requests that were made at least by two individual board members.
And, and are we asking then to waive the cost for board members?
Yeah, well, it would be, it would be a request by, that's why I phrased it that way, because it would be a request by the entire, by the entire board that they're directing the superintendent to provide that. So it's a, it's a board governance issue more as opposed to like a public records request on this. That was why it's that way.
Thank you. Okay, then, then should I, yes, Ms. Giavanelle?
Well, we have received half of the investigation. We've already received two of the investig, this is just the full investigation, and we received a portion of it. We never received all of it.
I understand that.
You had made that, you had made that request in one of our meetings prior to that, Ms. Fisher.
Yes, months ago, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so then, board members, are we requesting of the superintendent that we be provided with reports, not necessarily as public records requests, but as a members of the governance team without cost? I'll just pull the board. And Ms. Giavanelle? Okay, Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you. And the reason for that is, as a member of the governance team, it is my responsibility to view the district from a 30,000-foot view, and the details of an investigative report, I believe, fall outside the bounds of my role as a school board member.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica, okay. Ms. Jordan?
I was just curious why they would need the whole investigation? Because I don't believe that is my job to do that.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but we were given part of the investigation on some of the participants in the situation and not, not all. So it's like we were given part of the picture, but not the total thing. So I'm, all right, so if, if.
Well, I guess.
Fact you would need information as a board member, would you rather just pay for it then, or not?
No, I don't believe that they, no, I don't think they need to pay for it.
So are you voting that we ask the superintendent to waive payment for board members as members of the governance team?
As a member, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gittens? Okay, Mrs. Vaughn?
Well, yeah, but I do want to respond to what Ms. Patrica said because this particular investigative report had to do with a person who was directly involved in issues that were brought up in the audit of Fort Myers Technical College. And as such, I believe that it is part of purview of the board to take a look at that person's role because we are fiscally responsible and this connects. So that's, that's why I brought up that.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. So you're an affirmative, okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Morgan?
I'll say yes. I am just extremely concerned that this opens the door and that we will not, as a board, have the conversation that we need to have about this. So yes, with absolute reservations about doing.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and I'm an affirmative vote also for that. Thank you. Okay, so, and we will discuss it further at our workshop, which will be scheduled as soon as possible. Okay, now, Ms. Gittens, are you ready for your comments by phone? Or have you resolved your technical issues?
I am on the phone. I have lost video for some reason, my computer. Can you all hear me at least?
Yes, we can hear you.
I don't know what happened. It's plugged in, but it's not working. Okay, well, at least I got to show you Mr. Quick's award before I got blacked out here.
Yes, that was very nice.
Okay. The first thing I wanted to mention was the, I mentioned the census that we're at nationally 50%, Florida 48%, and Lee County is at 46%. So I am, you know, hoping that we all get the numbers up. But one of the things that the East Lee County Census Group is doing is this Saturday, we're going to have a East Lee County Census Parade, and we're going to meet, and it's CDC-affirmed because everyone will stay in their cars. But we'll meet at 2:00 at Muggs &amp; Juggs on Lee Boulevard, and we will parade through some of our hardest account areas. And we're going to have, the fire department is leading us off. We are partnering with 105.5 radio station, so everyone's radio will be tuned to the same station at the same time, and you'll be able to hear what's going on. So we're really excited about that. And if anybody is interested in getting out of the house and taking a ride for a cause, then please join us, and we'll post the information up as well. The next thing I had is that we have a, what I call a new normal. And the time for the new normal, we need to maintain as much normality as we probably can for us and for all of our stakeholders. So we need to look at the things we can control and the things we cannot. We can't control the fact that we have to have virtual meetings, but we can control the fact that we need to have all of our meetings. I was concerned that the two meetings were canceled, the briefing and the workshop. And I, I believe that the issue that occurred today with the longevity of all of the comments. And I, I believe that the issue that occurred today with the longevity of all of the comments could have been avoided had we had the workshop and the briefing, and the stakeholders and the public would have understand better, understood better what's going on. And that would have also included in the workshop, the superintendent's evaluation, which I think we still need to have as it was on the schedule, and I don't know exactly why some of these things were taken off. But I would like to, I don't know if I need to have it as a motion or whatever, that even during these times, that we continue to have all of our meetings as scheduled. So, Mr. Quick, I don't know, is that a something I need to make a motion or just have it in the minutes that I've been in?
I think, well, I think the, the superintendent and Dr. Atkins, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I think he said that he, that we will be going back to all meetings, including workshops and briefings starting in May. So I don't know, unless I'm not remembering that correctly or misquoting, I don't think it's necessary to have any sort of board direction on it. But, Dr., correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Quick is correct.
Okay, well, thank you. I wasn't aware of that. That's why I brought it up. Thank you. On the next item, I have coined a phrase on this, and it's called campaign hiring. And if you all recall back when Mr. Berry was up for the principalship, we, there was a, an event that occurred, and many people came to the, to the meeting and wrote letters and all of that. And I, I see it continuing. And some schools are encouraged to do it, and others are told, you know, don't do it. I, I just really think that we need to talk about our process to be fair to all because it's just something that started, and, and I, I'm not sure it's equitable to everybody to do that. So I'm requesting that we, Madam Chair, add that to our next workshop to talk about campaign-type hiring, and especially since we have a principalship or two that will be coming up. I think we need to discuss that and, and come to a conclusion on how that will or will not happen in the future. Also, and I think you kind of touched on it with the FMTC audit, I really would like to see an update on that. So I believe that was already discussed, so I can move on. And I hope that that report will also include the number of students that are, that were affected and are still affected, or are all of the students taken care of, that type of thing. And let's see, the next one. I'm asking that, oh, I think this one has kind of been covered. I was, it was about making, concerning decisions about employees and yet not, hold on, I'm trying to read my notes. All right, I'll come back to that one. Thank you to Susan and staff for revising the board policy. Our policy states that the board is to review this policy once a year. And I'm not sure about how this review came about because it didn't come before the board. And probably because we have a new employee coming on, which is why it was done. But I'm requesting that the next review, the protocol, be scheduled for April of next year so that we stay on that policy to do it at least once a year, and so that the board is involved in it as well, unless there's an issue that comes up prior to that. And I mentioned about, I believe we should have the workshop regarding the superintendent's evaluation. And I believe that's it, except for there's a lot of angst going on amongst staff and, and not staff so much as teachers and people and employees out in the schools. And I think we owe it to them to make sure that in all schools, we're, we're handling the situation we talked about earlier about layoffs and all that. I understand it's that time of year. I went through that 14 years. But we have to be equitable with our staff and, and so that they're hearing the correct message and all hearing the same thing. I also, lastly, the RSM. And Madam Chair, I'm asking you, when is that coming up and where are we on that? And that may be the superintendent because he did.
Yeah, and I know that Mr. Quick and Ms. Bruno and Brian Williams had a recent phone conference with RSM. So, Mr. Quick, can I ask you if you can just give us a brief update on that?
Yeah, I would expect that to come back before the board in probably the next meeting or two. Ms. Bruno, we have gotten her involved and onboarded her with that process. We had a meeting, I guess, a few days ago. I think it was on Friday. And just a few more things, but I would fully expect that to be before the board for discussion in May.
Okay, thank you. I know the other thing was, earlier today, was an example of having to make, they take a vote and make a decision on someone's, an employee's livelihood or whatever. And our policies do not allow us to have very much information. I really would like to, to look into that. I know there's some legalities to it. But it is very difficult to make a decision of that gravity and not have very much information about the situation. And sometimes the information that we have is what the public has, and I don't feel that that's fair. So if we can find some way to look at either revising the policy, having a closed-door session or something that would give us more information in order to make such a grave decision as we have to make regarding employees. And I believe that that is it, and I hope to see you at the parade on Saturday. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms., Mrs. Morgan? Please unmute, Mrs. Morgan.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the superintendent and staff, you know. This past month has made extraordinary demands on you. You've had to proceed on essentially two different tracks, one dealing with the pandemic and the other with trying to keep us focused on what it is that we need to accomplish in the next school year. So an awful lot of time has gone into, you, you, an awful lot has been asked of you, and, and I'm appreciative of that. Also, I want to thank the people on the front lines, in the schools and on the buses, and parents and teachers and kids for hanging in there and going along with this experience. I'm not hearing a lot, but what I'm hearing is good. I want to thank you, the, the students and families who communicated their concerns about the plan to change the high school schedule. I read the emails. I tried to respond to most of them, and I listened to the comments today. I think we have received considerable constructive input that will serve us as we move forward with our discussions about the schedule and any other academic initiatives we may choose to investigate. So that, that's my comment about public hearing today. Now, I am really concerned that we have, we are off the tracks with respect to our business. So I want to ask the board to develop a schedule, time and task-specific, to address critical matters for our decision between now and November. Those issues being the high school schedule, RSM, the budget and communications. The high school schedule, I want to see dates on which the high school schedule matter will be briefed and workshopped now. I want to see a published schedule for DAC and SAC meetings that will take place before the board workshop. And I want to see the role or place of Talc and Spalk in these conversations. I think the public and all of us just want to know what's happening, when, who's participating. And I assume there will be an end date of November so that we can proceed with our planning for the 2122 school year. Secondly, the RSM contract expires on June 30th. So we have less than six weeks to evaluate our internal auditor and make a decision about what we are doing. All we have for the internal auditor are job requirements and state law, the job description and deliverables in the contract. We have no instrument for evaluating. We have no rubrics. But we have to decide how we're going to move forward, internal, external, and what the terms of the contract will be. If our evaluation of them is good, we roll the contract over with the same terms. If there are things that we have learned from this contract that need to go into the contract, the next contract, then our, our board attorney needs to know what those things are. We need to have that conversation. So we need a board plan for a process to begin tomorrow for completion by May 30th, in my opinion, to renew the contract or direct staff to, to create an RFQ. We also have to have a conversation about communications. I want to see workshops, at least three workshops scheduled between now and November. Because I think the problem is that it, it, it is not just a problem of communication at the board level, not a problem of communication only with the board and the superintendent, but it's a, it's a problem of communications from the top of the organization to the bottom. Essentially, we don't have a common understanding at the top or at the bottom of what our goals, roles and responsibilities are so that we are constantly competing to communicate across and between groups in, on, on totally, totally, in totally different realms. So I think we need to have a conversation about the board and governance team communication. I think we need to have a conversation about district leadership, how we communicate with them, how they communicate with us, what their role is with respect to communicating with school leadership, school leadership. The SACS, this business of the high school scheduling needs to be talked about in the SACS. The SIPs need to be talked about in the SACS. We talk about family engagement and, and reaching out. Family engagement starts at the school level, and we are not doing our part at the school level to engage people about issues that are critical. So I'm, we need facilitated workshops discussing communications horizontally and vertically with the goal of establishing protocols for the board and governance team and documenting our expectations as a board for communications at other levels of the organization internally, with the public, and, and what is the role of Talc and Spalk in the communications at all levels. And then the budget, we have the budget. So bottom line, I am respectfully requesting the board chair to publish ASAP agendas for briefing and workshops between now and November, recognizing that our focus on these four topics need to be completed. Budget, May, June, July. RSM, May, with a decision by the end of May. High school, August to November. Communications, June to November. I also, the, the thing about, I want to figure out some place to put this in, but several times people said we need to do surveys and, and people suggested there should be referendums. I don't want to be a school board that makes decisions by referendum. I think we have to make it clear that we were elected to make certain decisions. And while we seek input, we, we are not expecting people to tell us what they think is best. It's our responsibility to decide what we think is best for all students. And then finally, I think today's public comment, we got to figure out what we're going to do about public comment. We can't have three-minute comments when there are 60, 60 comments when our board protocol or our board policy says you have 60 people, they get a minute. And I understand that you can't take the written comments and cut them off after a minute because the content's not there. But we really got to figure out what we're going to do. I just, you know, I just thought this was something new, and we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do about it. So that's my wish list. And I also want to add my congratulations to our member, Patrica. I think that FSBA has gotten themselves an extraordinary leader in, in the wings. And I, I'm excited about their work going forward, as I have been about their work all along. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan. So I'll move right along, and at the risk of being redundant, I do want to thank the superintendent and all of the staff who have worked so much harder and so long. And I think that with staff's involvement in the response to the pandemic emergency is one of the reasons why we did not have the April workshops and briefings because staff was otherwise occupied in a, in a very precarious and time-certain requirement that they have some things done. We've done an amazing job and, and have had so many positive comments regarding not only the distance learning and the delivery of packets and the response of teachers to parents on email and phone calls and helping their kids to really work through this. But the grab-and-go feeding of the community and the partnerships with our, our community agencies have been stellar. So I, I can't thank everybody enough for all the work that they've done. And I cannot wait till I can stand up because I need to go to one of those schools and hand out some lunches, regardless of whether I'm young enough or not. Anyway, I wanted to say that, you know, John, I, I have your cell phone number, so I'm not going to say that I'm going to miss you that much because I might still call you. But I wanted to say thank you very much for your response and your support and the dignified way that you have handled yourself in your tenure with us, and, and I really appreciate that. And I want to thank you also for helping Kathy Bruno to onboard and including her so that she can have enough information to be able to hit the ground running next week. That, and, and along with you, I'd also like to thank Brian Williams because I know he's been instrumental with that also. So, you know, it's a new day. We're learning a lot in this endemic situation. I think families in many ways are coming together, but then again, we have some kids who are really at risk because their families are stressed out and not able to care for them like we would hope. So I'm praying a lot about that. I know that as a governance team, this board and this superintendent value our students, and we value our community, the public who own the public schools. I found that even after reading the emails that we received over the last few weeks, it was very difficult for me to listen to Mr. Quick read those. And I identified, and also had someone text me that they identified that a couple of those students sound like they need someone to reach out to them because they may be, they may be in need of that, and their mental health may be at risk. So we're going to follow up on that. I think that as a governance team, we have a responsibility to work as a team. And as long as I'm on this board, I'm determined that something like this will not happen again, that we will have our students' voices heard ahead of time, that we will have our community make, be part of making big decisions. And, and that with our superintendent and our board members, we will pull together as a team and do what it is that we need to do to serve our community with integrity, honesty, and, and empathy and caring about our community. Like, I heard some of the students say, well, it's obvious you don't care about kids. We all do care about kids, and I want the public to know that. We have our differences on this board, but I know that everyone on this board has a heart for the children, and that's why we're here. I know that the superintendent has a heart for the children, and that's why he's here. So we are going to pull together and for the children, and that's why he's here. So we are going to pull together, and, um, I'm, I'm going to be bringing my stick in so that we do that. I just really think that, um, moving forward, we will make, uh, more thoughtful decisions, and we will communicate better with our staff and they with us so that we can make sure that people are feeling like they are valued and appreciated. Other than that, I have no other comments, except for everyone in your family to stay safe and be well, and God bless you all. Um, Mr. Quick, do you have some comments?
I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve as your inner, uh, board attorney. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with everybody. Uh, it's been personally fulfilling for me as well. I wanted to thank you all for, uh, for your support and kind words, not just today, but, but the entire time that I've been on board. Uh, I will, I will miss working with you all, but I have the utmost confidence in Mr. Puy Bruno, and I think you will be in good hands with her. And with anything, I, I will be here to support her. And, and, and like you said, you all have my cell phone, so if you need anything, feel free to call. Uh, I, I'm happy to, uh, to help. Um, I just have one special request. If Ms. Gittens, if you could scan and send that certificate to me, because I don't think my kids will believe me that I got, I've got an award today if I don't show them proof. So thank you very much. And, uh, and, you know, stay safe, everyone. It, it's been, it's been a pleasure. And obviously, I'll, I'll still be here, uh, until Kathy is on board, and I will provide whatever support even once she is on board that, that you guys may need.
Thank you very much, John, and good luck to you and your future. Okay, Superintendent Atkins?
All right, and thank you, uh, Mr. Quick, for your service, and enjoy the certificate. The, um, the, uh, public comment today, I just want to, um, uh, just say a couple brief words. First of all, I, I appreciate that. I think that, uh, one of the things that we, uh, need to be prepared as we're moving forward, uh, to continue to solicit public input into our schedule is that we will continue to get those type of comments. This is going to be a difficult transition as we discuss this. Um, when you talk, start talking about seven period versus block, uh, it is always, uh, an issue that brings about a lot of controversy. And, um, you know, I, I wanted, want everybody to understand that, you know, this is a recommendation that I made as a superintendent based on what I thought was best for children. So I do want to clarify, you know, this isn't a board recommendation or anything like that. That is a, a recommendation that comes from the superintendent. When it comes from, when you talk about a schedule, that's typically a decision that has, that is made at a, um, you know, at a school level. And, um, so we did solicit a lot of input from our schools, uh, to arrive at this recommendation. That having been said, uh, the board, you know, obviously approves the bell schedule. And I think the recommendations to increase student time, uh, which I still firmly believe in, I, I do believe that that is in the best interest of, of our children because we want to, to make sure that all of our kids are prepared for what's next. And I know that board members feel the same way. So that, that is going to be a bell schedule change that will come, you know, in front of the board members at some point. Uh, and it's not this year that will be anything different, but next year it potentially could be. So we will, um, be happy to, uh, publish the, the schedule when that public input will occur. I think I did mention in my earlier comments that student advisory, uh, district advisory, um, SACS, all of that would be that we could involve them, you know, become involved in the process. I would encourage everyone, though, um, to continue to be engaged because one thing I did, um, well, while, uh, much of the public comment was well-articulated and, and really good arguments. There was also a lot of misconceptions that I heard in that public comment as well. So I think that if we continue to have dialogue, conversation, uh, read the materials that are put out, and, and to be able to respond, it's hard to respond to public comment at, when you hear 60 comments, um, you know, but if you're in a, if you're in a public setting when the person's in front of you, uh, then, you know, I think it's a much richer dialogue. So we'll look forward to that. But anyway, I appreciate everybody taking the time to do that. Um, if we were all engaged in educational issues to that degree, I think we would all be better off, honestly. So, uh, so thank you and continue to, uh, monitor, monitor that. And hopefully that our students have learned a lesson here, that your voice can make a difference, that people do listen to what you have to say, and it may not appear that at first, but, but, um, you know, it is, uh, again, I think an important lesson for them. But also to continue to, to listen to, to, um, to arguments and of others and, um, you know, with an open mind. So that's, uh, that's enough about that particular. Uh, we've talked a lot about the schedule today, so let me move to a couple other items really, uh, quickly. Uh, RSM, uh, Mr. Quick was correct. Uh, we are, I think, really close to, um, getting a, um, agreement around a, a policy. The policy's almost there. I just, uh, I really want us to make sure our procedures are, are updated. Many of those are already ready to go, but we'll, we'll get that last meeting with RSM and hopefully bring that forward at a, at a very, uh, in the very near future. Uh, Ms. Gittens had asked about how that would run forward in terms of a briefing, um, you know, pre-brief, brief, and also a, a board meeting. And, uh, Jen Schaefer provided that to me, so we'll get that to the board members so that you know what that timeline might look like. Uh, the final thing is that it's important for us to, to just get some information out there about high school graduation. Uh, staff is currently pursuing two avenues. Uh, one is a virtual, uh, graduation that will give recognition to each and every one of our students, uh, virtually. But we are also pursuing a, uh, graduation postponement that will occur at this point, possibly sometime in July with, uh, social distancing. Uh, we have to secure venues. Uh, it might be like the old high school graduations that we have seen in the past where it's a football stadium or something like that. But we are pursuing both of those options right now as we kind of wait to see how, how this thing unfolds, um, as we move into May and then into June. So I just know that staff are, are continuing to watch that, and, uh, we can, we'll continue to keep you posted, uh, on our high school graduation. Uh, again, that's, I, it, other than I expressing my appreciation, appreciation to all of you for your comments today and, uh, hanging in there for a lengthy public comment, but I think this is an issue that's worth it in the long run. Uh, I think we're all trying to do what's best for our kids. And so I, I appreciate everybody taking the time to listen to that. I think that was important. And that's all for my, oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. Jennifer Edwards, uh, was appointed today in the consent agenda, uh, O'Kamic to, uh, as the assistant principal, and, uh, Leslie, Leslie Cornwell, uh, who came from High School from teacher to assistant principal. So thank you very much, and we'll expect great things out of those new leaders.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. Uh, I see Ms. Patricia has her hand up. Would you unmute, please?
Dr. Atkins, can we, um, take the word cancellation off the table as we get questions from the community? Can we tell them that, um, the cancellation is not an option in Lee County?
Uh, yes, ab- absolutely. I think that's a fair assessment. Uh, we're looking at, again, two different options. It might even be a combination of the two, but it's not going to be cancellation. This is a huge event in a student's life, and, and I think we have to provide recognition of that event. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, Ms. Gittens, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Gittens, I hear you.
Okay, we forgot to mention Carrie Hardeman was appointed as assistant principal for the Gateway High School as well.
Thank you for that. Congratulations to Carrie. Okay. And any other comments, board members? On, on Monday, May 4th, there'll be a board workshop at 1:00. On Tuesday, May 5th, there'll be a briefing meeting at 1:00, followed by an action meeting at 3:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
No moves.
No moves. From Mrs. Giavennelli and seconded by Mrs. Gittens. And, uh, please record your vote, board members, and thank you all for your patience and we'll.
Ms. Johnson, can you please vote affirmative for me?
And thank you, Susan, for keeping us straight. I'm rescinding her, her retirement.
Ms. Wong, may I vote affirmatively for you? I see you.
Did it just come through? Yes, you may. I kept touching it, but it. Okay. All right. And thank you. Then this, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you all. God bless. Bye-bye.